All right, welcome, everyone. Especially our pageant winners. We are gonna, or I guess I have the privilege of calling the July 11, 2022 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're gonna begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Perush, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you can stand, I ask that you do, please.
In the few weeks since we last sat at this table, events out of Washington and across the country have left us reeling from tragedy and loss that at times is almost too much to comprehend. From the killing and wounding of so many in Highland Park, Illinois, to the tragic loss of one of the city of Detroit's finest police officers, to the serious increase in gun violence in major cities across the country, now made even harder to combat by the Supreme Court's recent decision, and with a blow to women's rights handed down by that same court just days later, it's tempting to be discouraged and to have no energy for continuing to fight for justice and fairness and common sense policies that would protect us all. But this country has faced extremely challenging times before, and somehow we as citizens have always found the courage and strength to push forward to overcome these obstacles in our fight for a better democracy. This is no time to let down our efforts, no matter how hard it seems. Our way of life and our country depend on our efforts to move forward. True fairness and justice will come in incremental steps, and we must be prepared for the long haul, but we have no other choice. In the meantime, we hold in our hearts those who have been devastated by recent tragedies and remember those who have lost their lives so suddenly. We hold in our hearts the families who have ever changed by grief and loss. May we extend to all of them consolation and comfort. We ask that the memories of those that have survived the trauma and devastation be healed, and that they have courage to face the days ahead. And for those who are marching forward to fight for human rights and fairness and justice, we ask that they have courage and strength to continue their vital work. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to the approval of the agenda. I'd like to remind my colleagues, we need to add an item 12. Does anyone wish to approve the agenda with noting an 12? Commissioner Macy?
We move to approve the agenda with the addition of an item 12 to approval to proceed as recommended by council in closed session as it relates to Healy.
So, closed session.
Sorry? Healy, it's a case name.
Yeah, hold on. So, to proceed as is recommended by council in closed session for the Healy case. Okay. All right. Um, any discussion? Or do we have a second on that motion? Second, Mike, Commissioner Perush, any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to public comment. So, the city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside to address the city commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment tonight, we do have one public hearing. If you're here to comment on the public hearing, which is a special assessment for paving of Parkdale Avenue, you can wait until we get to that agenda topic of which we'll open up the public hearing. The same rules of this public comment will apply, and you can speak your voice on that topic when we open up that public hearing. If you wish to speak tonight at the public hearing or at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, we'll ask you to state your name and address. Please be mindful that the city commission wants to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less, and there is a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no worries, you can always email us any day, anytime. We get those emails. Please know the city commission typically doesn't respond directly to public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address your questions when the agenda topic is discussed. If your comments or questions are unrelated to an agenda topic, our city manager is also taking notes and refers them to the proper department and gets resolution as appropriate. So, with that, I see Ms. March is here, and I'll ask her to come on up first for public comment, because we have some pageant winners here tonight with us from Juneteenth.
Okay, well, hello, everybody, and everyone behind us as well. So, my name is Summer March. I run an organization called Power Detroit, and we hosted the first-ever 2022 Mr. and Miss Juneteenth Pageant. And so, of course, as we know, Juneteenth is a holiday that's celebrated in many black communities and households. It has been celebrated for decades, and one huge way that a lot of people celebrated is through a pageant. And our pageant really, it was not a beauty pageant, but it was really a way that we highlighted academic success and community service in our youth. And so, our youth had to, older contestants had to submit an essay, all contestants had to interview with our panel of judges, and they also had to send in a highlight video. And in that video, they basically told us why they wanted to win. So, you know, what they were doing in their community, what grades they were keeping up in school, everything that made them amazing and wonderful. And after that, our judges picked winners. We had five Juneteenth winners. We had a Miss Little Juneteenth, a Miss Junior Juneteenth, and a Mr. Little Juneteenth. They could not be here with us tonight, but we do have two winners that are here, and I'm gonna step aside and have them introduce themselves.
Hello? Can you hear me? My name is Cassidy Conley. I'm 16 years old. I hold the title of Miss Teen Juneteenth, and I aspire to pursue a career in politics as well, as a state legislator or in the city. Of course, that's where you want to start off at. And I currently serve as vice chair in the Michigan High School Democrats. So, yeah, I'm heavily involved into politics. Good.
Well, hello and good evening, everyone. My name is Tylin Thornton. I'm 13 years old. I attend Bates Academy, and I currently want to pursue a career in education, teaching college, um, excuse me, teaching college literacy or college criminology classes. I currently hold the title of Miss Pre-Teen Juneteenth. Thank you.
So, um, everybody who did the pageant, you know, did not win. Our judges were, we really tried to pick judges who were heavily involved in the community. So, we had like a Channel 4 news anchor, we had people who had their own businesses, we had community activists. And so, our judges really deliberated, took like five, six hours for them to really pick and come up with our winners. But like I said, it's not a beauty pageant. We are really, really making sure that our winners are heavily involved in the community and heavily involved in school, because they are now role models for our youth. And so, after the pageant, the very next day, Royal Oak had a Juneteenth celebration, and our winners were crowned at that celebration. So, we, of course, thank you guys so much for hosting that for us. Everyone, all the winners and their families were just so gracious. We actually had a really wonderful time as well. Just the event overall was a wonderful celebration and a great way to celebrate Juneteenth. So, we thank you, and of course, we look forward. They have their titles for a year, and as you heard, they are very smart. They, we actually have one that's in an engineering camp right now. She just took some time to come over here. So, you will see their faces, you will hear their name, and any way that they can be involved in the community, you of, of course, let us know. So, thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you, congratulations. Way to be a risk taker, put yourselves out there. You know, often, these meetings are boring and full of things like road assessments and things of that nature, but it's so nice to see we have a bright future in the community. Take care, goodnight. All right. Who's next? Public comment. Mr. Ashley.
Good evening, Alan Ashley, Royal Oak. I'm gonna discuss on item number seven. I have a little question on financing. For 40 years, I worked in IT. Of those 40 years, 30 of them I spent as a contractor, most of the time as a W-2 contractor, which means I got paid 2,000, I got based, paid on basis of 2,080 hours. Never, and I worked for some of the biggest companies in the state, Ford, Chrysler, General Motors, Eaton, Park Davis, Volkswagen. And of those big companies, I never got paid benefits. I always had to cover my own benefits. If I wanted benefits, I would have to take a lesser rate in the benefits then if I worked more than a year there, those benefits, if it, if they went up, my rate went down. So, they never, always, never got more than what my rate is. The question is, in the 2080, I also never got holiday pay. And I hope the person that's elected, this is based on days, if there's a holiday like 4th of July in the middle of the week, and the company's closed, you don't get paid because it's off. That's the way it worked. You got no salary for that day. I'm just wondering why you didn't base it off a 1920, use, and still get paid the benefits that would give them holiday pay and all the rest. But if you're gonna be paying off a 2,080, I don't understand why, if that person takes a day off, he doesn't get paid, because you're not paid for that day, you're not working. This is based on working days, working hours, not taking time off. So, that's how it's done in the real world, and I was just questioning why it was based on 2,080, not 1920. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley.
Bill Harrison, 27, 29, Trafford. I've got new glasses, they don't work any better than the cheaters that I have.
They look good, though, Mr. Harrison.
The invocation at the last meeting focused on the Supreme Court decision to turn abortion rights back to the individual states. This decision merely eliminates federal control over abortion and turns control back to the states where it belongs. Note that this action may never have happened if you socialists had not overreached by promoting third trimester abortions and infanticide. Similar overreach by the Justice Department to criminalize free speech at school board meetings by parents opposing CRT and the discussion of alternative sexuality may result in the future elimination of the Federal Department of Education and turn the control of education back to the states. Jimmy Carter created the Department of Education in 1979 in an effort to provide equal education opportunity in each of the states. This is just another example of how the centralization of power can be misdirected and not in line with the farmers, the framers of the Constitution intended. Switching subjects to the library millage, the library millage ballot proposal states a portion of the revenue from the millage may be subject to capture by the City of Royal Oak Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. The Brownfield Authority was established 22 years ago, initiated by then-commissioner Laura Harrison, and I served on the board. The entire city is designated as a brownfield. The authority provides for contaminated land to be developed into productive property in the city. It is my recollection that the bonds to fund the cleanup were to be retired by TIF funds, tax increment funds, captured as a result of the increased value of the development. People are asking me, knowing that I had been on the board, how much of the library millage is historically siphoned off to the Brownfield Authority? Why is the Brownfield Authority not sustainable after 21 years? There are currently nine active Brownfield sites, and six have been dissolved. The last Brownfield cleanup reimbursement agreement was in 2018. However, it is anticipated that the 11 Mile and Main project may apply for funding to clean up the corner where the Kevorkian gas station was located. You need to address this issue, or there are several people that will not vote for the library millage, knowing that the library will not receive the full benefit of the millage increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. All right, who's next? Yes, sir?
I'm Bobby Lawrence. I'm with State Center of Marshal-Bullock's office. Just want to let you all know that we're here, we care, and that we're ready to work. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Tina Hasset, 411 Linwood Avenue, Royal Oak. Longtime Royal Oak resident, so long that my elementary school is now a dog park, and my junior high is now McDonald's. So, been around quite some time. I'm also the president of the Royal Oak Titans Youth Football and Cheer Program here in Royal Oak. We offer football and cheer to kids ages 5 to 13. We have over 200 kids in our program every year. We're 100% nonprofit. We rely on volunteers and fundraising to maintain the team's needs, and just like everything else today, the, the costs have skyrocketed. The cost for equipment, uniforms, even our helmets are over $300 apiece. This year, we had the opportunity to manage two beverage booths at Taco Fest. With those two beverage booths, our team earned over $20,000 over the four-day weekend. So, with that kind of money, we're able to keep our registration costs low and offer scholarships to a lot of the families in Royal Oak that can't afford to register their kids in our program. The Titans also use that money to give back to Royal Oak. We have donated to Royal Oak Youth Assistance in the past. We donate to the Senior Center in buying gifts for elderly, and this past year, we sponsored two baseball teams with the Sandlot, a softball team and a baseball team. I understand that there's a lot of commotion about the event on the weekend being big and long lines, and, but they were manageable. We had a great time, we had a great event, the feedback was positive, the festival staff jumped in to help, uh, help us when we needed it. We had a great turnout, we just had a wonderful, wonderful experience. So, I'm here to thank the city of Royal Oak for allowing those opportunities to happen in Royal Oak, which allow our team to maintain, raise the funds that we need, to offer families the opportunity to invest their kids in the sports that Royal Oak has to offer. So, thank you to everybody.
Wonderful. Thank you for bringing your perspective, and thank you for all the hard work you do.
Thank you.
Such a great program.
It was a great event.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Teresa Mullin, and I am a new business owner here in Royal Oak. My business is The Fern. It's off of East Fourth Street, 406 East Fourth Street. The Fern is a new business to Royal Oak, and I serve healthy teas and fruit smoothies. We're not quite open yet. We ran into some obstacles with our HVAC, but we're hoping for August, fingers crossed. I had the honor to work with John Witz and Mike Simon for the Taco Fest that took place 4th of July weekend, and it was The Fern's first festival that we were able to take part in. Because this was my first festival, they offered me their expertise in what it takes to serve large quantities and a big population as such. Mike and his team were incredibly helpful. Saturday was really busy. I understand the lines were crazy, but everyone was working their butts off, and I am just so thankful for the entire team, the city, the police officers, fire department, people who, you know, it was so hot outside, and I were lucky enough to be able to serve those who needed something to drink. We sold out on Saturday, which is a small business's dream, and because we had to start late the next day, Taco Fest team was so understanding and helped us navigate through the entire festival to help us set up the next afternoon. I had to do a bunch of shopping. So, I just wanted to say thank you to the Taco Fest team for the incredible opportunity and the experience, and thank you to our city for allowing such an eventful event, and we hope to see The Fern at Arts Beats and Eats coming soon. So, thank you to the mayor, and thank you all commissioners. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Claudia. Appreciate it. All right. Who's next? Going once, going twice, gentleman in the maroon polo shirt, and the khaki shorts, and the perfect hair.
Got it done, and especially for you guys. So, my name is John Witz, and I, along with John Bedancheck, a Royal Oak resident, produced Taco Fest this past weekend. I want to thank the commission and the Royal Oak DDA for supporting the event. I did want to respond to some of the feedback we've seen on social platforms, especially those in Royal Oak. Some of the feedback was as fiery as the ghost pepper in our hot pepper eating contest, so I definitely want to address it. In the short window, I will do my best to just respond to some feedback. The biggest feedback we heard was that there were too many people on Saturday, which led to long lines and a bad experience. In preparation for this event, we had 45 food trucks, 40 of them which served tacos. In comparison, the Michigan Taco Fest at Canterbury Village had 16 food trucks and 12 that served tacos, and that's a longstanding event. So, we prepared for triple that amount. We heard consistently about the long lines that were in excess of an hour at some locations on the Saturday timeframe. We stopped admission periodically at 6:30 PM and closed the festival early at 9:00, and this wasn't enough, and we apologize, especially to Royal Oak residents who had that experience. There is no excuse, but we quickly learned that tacos have special orders and options, and getting the food from a taco truck takes time. We learned our lesson on Sunday and added more beverage servers and locations, and stopped admission periodically early at 4:30 PM and had much less wait times. For next year, we know, we need either to make the event bigger, which we will explore with the city, and limit ticket sales, which we will study. In addition to more food trucks, we think more overall entertainment and family entertainment would be key additions for next year as well. There was also feedback on the reason for an admission fee. The city, our admission fee ranged from $5.50 in advance and a group package to $10 at the door. The overall festival, the overall budget was $550,000 to put this event on, include important costs as generators, power, insurance, security, public safety, entertainment, staffing, equipment, fencing, and more. And on the public safety standpoint, we invested more in wanding guests. For the first time, we checked for weapons just based on climate and thought that was an appreciated thing to do by our patrons, had a lot of good feedback on it. So, not only does the admission fee cover these costs, but it also helps restrict the interest in the event, so we have more manageable crowds, you know, because people were concerned about how crowded it was. So, I wanted to just mention what those fees go for. There was also feedback on food truck quality and authenticity, which I thought actually was outstanding. We had eight trucks from southwest Detroit, 38% were Latin American, Mexican-owned, 23% were African American-owned, 13% were Arab American-owned, and 28% were women-owned, and I was thrilled with that, and those businesses did $750,000 to help their small business over the weekend, which, by the way, is equivalent to the third highest Arts Beats and Eats, or, excuse me, Arts Beats and Eats food sale three years ago. I'm asking for more time to make one offer to the residents of Royal Oak.
Does anyone object to extending Mr. Witz's time so he can make an offer to the residents of Royal Oak? No one objects? Okay, Mr. Witz.
Okay. So, just for any Royal Oak resident that had feedback or expressed on social platforms, whether it be the city's or ours, and especially those who attended Saturday, our offer is to email us at info@artsbeatsandeats.com, and we will provide another taco event for all those who respond and treat everyone, not only to free admission to this event, but also to free tacos for them and their families. We will invest money that we took in Saturday, and we will do a make-good, this is for Royal Oak residents only, info@artsbeatsandeats.com. I'll work with Judy Davids on getting this message out, and we will create two to three pop-up events. We will have your name in advance, so we will know exactly how many people are attending, and we will prepare the proper amount of food trucks and experience for residents. We ask people to respond on the honor system. If you came out on Saturday at 2 o'clock, and, or Sunday at 2 o'clock, and had a great experience, you know, we would expect you not, but we are asking everybody on the honor system, who especially were there on Saturday or couldn't get into the event on Saturday or Sunday because of our restrictions. We take the privilege of being able to host major events in the city seriously. We want to be accountable to this commission and to the residents to do our best, and certainly we will learn from this. This was a first-time event, and we would love to treat everyone to free tacos, less waits, and if we know the amount of people that RSVP, we will prepare for that. So, I have more, we'll save it for a future time, but there are a lot of positives on this event as well, and heard from a lot of patrons who thoroughly enjoyed it, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witz.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else tonight, public comment? All right, I'm gonna turn the meeting to this side of the table, and we are going to get to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Commissioner Hunt.
Six I and J.
Six I and J. Commissioner Douglas?
Six D.
Six D?
D as in doctor. Those are yours.
Those are yours. Commissioner Polo?
I never pull stuff off because I, I don't know why you would presume that.
Well, you see, I look to the right, just in case, first. All right. Okay, so, we'll pull those off, talk about them right after. Now, the consent agenda consists of city commission meeting minutes from the 27th, claims from July 1st, July 1st special pay, and July 12th, approval of purchase orders, Treasury Department request to fill vacancy, approval to order water main materials, 2023 water main improvements, approval of tentative agreement, Police Command Officers Association, approval to, of extension to tentative agreement, technical professional and office workers of Michigan, and receiving file the second quarter 2022 training evaluation forms. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion by Commissioner Douglas, or second, second by Commissioner Macy. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We'll go in order. Commissioner Douglas, D.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fenton, Mr. Liall, up until two or three years ago, Comcast customers were able to watch public meetings through public access channels provided by Comcast, and at some point Comcast stopped broadcasting those events. Now, I confess, I read through the contract, but I'm not sure where that might be buried or covered. Does the renewal of this contract mean that Comcast will be restoring that service?
As far as restoring the service, I've spoke with the local Comcast Government and Regulatory Affairs representative who is here this evening that can elaborate much further on that question, but the, the precise issue that you are referring to is a technical one, not necessarily a contractual issue. As I understand it, and Benjamin Miller, Ben Miller, who's here, is sitting in the front row, can further expand. The system of which the public access channels or PEG channels were instituted back in the 90s was, has become outdated, and that has caused it not to be able to transmit. It's a problem that not just is particular to the city of Royal Oak, but to other southeast Michigan communities. They are working on that to try to, to increase fiber optic network to be able to handle that. With that, I, if the commission so desires, I would ask if Mr. Miller could come back and further expand on that, or if you have any further questions on what I just said.
Yeah, that would be fine. I would just like to add that we, I serve on our senior services Aging a Place Task Force, and many seniors still have traditional cable TV. I know there's cord cutters out there in the world, but many seniors do rely on cable TV, and now only one cable company is providing this service. And I do wonder, and perhaps he can tell us why, that company is able to do that and Comcast is not. So, yeah, I'd be happy to hear. So yeah, I'd be happy to hear from him.
Commissioner Collo?
I'll just add, Commissioner Douglas says it's actually Section 7F and G indicate that we will have a PEG channel, that we will have access. And it's been multiple years without access. So unless Mr. Miller has some really good things to say, tears, it's been a long time to fix this. I'm not sure the new contract until this is fixed.
Anybody else? All right. I'll take privilege, Mr. Miller. Would you like to elaborate a little bit? Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Royal Council. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, Commissioner. Commissioner Dubac and I are friends, so I expect a full public flogging this evening. Well, thank you for your question, Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Collo. I, as city attorney outlined, the PEG system, Public Education and Government, was built in the late 90s in a now obsolete system. We, as a cable provider, to your question about why us versus another provider, we only get what is sent to us at the head end. We don't program, we don't decide. It's what you all produce. If it's not being sent, I, there are a number of PEGs in the, in the state where they do levy fees, where the communities have varying degrees of activity. Now, it, to the point about the larger holistic problem in this particular corner of Oakland County, you and a number of your adjoining communities were all built on that same system. They were, shall we say, more vocal about the lack of a feed for their particular channels. So because of that, they made us aware, and we became aware of the problems with modulators, the problems with the laser, and so on and so forth. We have begun a process with those communities, and including here in Royal Oak with the schools, who made us aware that their system was no longer working, and they were no longer able to produce a feed. And we have begun a process of moving away from the INET system, the obsolete one, and beginning to build a fibered system. That is a process we began back in late January, early February. I will confess and own the fact that I assumed this particular corner of this territory at about that time. I should have applied some logic to suggest that just because I had heard from Royal Oak, that their system was probably also not working, as Berkeley's was not, Pleasant Ridge's was not, Ferndale's was not, Royal Oak's schools were not, and so on and so forth. So I would put in front of you that it was on me to not initiate and not wait for you all to have called. That said, what I've spoken with Deputy Manager Fenton, with Council Liel, that we will work to begin the process of rebuilding the Royal Oak PEG channel. That will be a lengthy process. We are subject to all the same problems that everyone else is in terms of manpower, capital, equipment, fiber, so on and so forth. It is also, as a process, once we have walked out the route, and I understand too that you have plenty of conduit here, so getting it from City Hall will not be the issue. But for right-of-way's with sidewalks and so on, what we need to do as an underground, what we need to do as an aerial, those will all be things we'll have to walk out and map. We will provide an estimate, and we will come back and work with your IT team to figure out how and what is the best way to do that. So what I would say to you tonight is the franchise agreement is indirectly related to the PEG channel, in so much as it prescribes the percentage of fees that residents pay that you've levied, and I believe it's 5% here in Royal Oak, that you capture and maintain to figure out a way to get that back up and running. Otherwise, the franchise agreement is a 10-year agreement, and it is not, there are communities that don't levy PEGs, that don't have PEGs, that don't use them. And those are renewed and it's prescribed under state law. So in so much as I can commit to you this evening that we, we will do that, I've made the commitment to council and to the city manager, I make it to you publicly in front of everyone here that we will do that. But otherwise, it's referenced in and spoken to in the franchise agreement per se, but is not related in terms of its operation.
I guess I'll ask staff this question. Is there a, any sort of compensation that we might adjust the contract to reflect the lack of this service?
That is always something that we can discuss with Comcast as far as how, you know, how we could address that, that issue that, or the question that you have raised.
I mean, are our residents paying for this?
As a pass-through, yes.
A subscriber, yes, a subscriber to Comcast service, video service, not, if you have just our broadband service, you wouldn't pay. But with your, if you subscribe to our video service, you have been paying that 5% on your total bill. That money is yours. That's, that, if, if the council, like, I don't want to put words in the attorney or your council's mouth, but if the council itself or the city chose to look back and refund that money to those customers, that's something we can discuss the possible mechanics of. But that's not money we have. That's not ours. That's, that's yours.
Okay. Thanks for now.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Mr. Miller, thank you for being here today. I, in my understanding, just looking at this right now, I think the best view is, you know, we want to be partners with Comcast. You know, you provide access to, I'm sure, tens of thousands of our residents, if not cable, but surely broadband access, which is, you know, increasingly popular. I would, I think at this point maybe it'd be comfortable, we heard this great narrative from you, and I believe it maybe if we saw a plan before us, we can table this for a while, get a plan together, and we can put that to paper, come back with, you know, a detail, and we can have a plan together that says, here's, here's what the problem is. You know, because a lot of this, I think we're hearing for the first time now, it wasn't prepared beforehand. We can see what the problem is, because this has been a conversation that maybe it's your predecessor that they were having it with, but it has been maybe two year, you know, we've been without access for two and a half years now. So maybe we could see what the plan is, the timeline to completion, and then consider that as we re-up this contract. I think at this point, that might be a way to kind of solve, you know, that maybe some conflict we have with not having cable access for everyone, but also make sure that, we do want to make sure that Comcast is an option. We want to make sure that we provide enough cable options to our residents.
I think my question would be is, you know, what does that timeline look like? What does the gut feel, Mr. Miller? Is it two years? Is it one year?
It wouldn't be two years. If we do a walkout, I would be comfortable, here we are, let's be in comparison, I'll just use the schools as an example. That was a move, so it was a little different, but be that as it may. That was the end of January, and we're not done yet. So here we are in the middle of July. So it is reasonable to have a plan, an estimate, a walkout before the end of August, I would imagine. I would be comfortable with that as, on the record. As for the actual completion of the project, I would be reluctant to give a hard and fast date. And that's not just me being evasive. I want to be honest. I don't want to sit here and tell you it's going to be after Labor Day and then be here the meeting after Labor Day and say it's not happening. I would also understand that there are factors beyond our control regarding the attachment process. And I don't get into pole attachment 101 here, but the basic terms here are the provider for, for, in the aerial component, is DTE. Is, I mean, I don't have a map in front of me, but I'm going to ballpark here in southern Oakland County, it's DTE. So we will have to submit our permits. As any of you probably have walked on a sidewalk or something and looked up, you've seen the power at the top, about 13 feet down will be a series of very thick black cable. That is fiber. That is fiber, that's a provider's fiber. In this particular area, you'll probably note there are more than one. So in the make-ready process, which is the, and I don't mean to use an industry in vernacular, but it is the process and order in which those things move. So every time a provider is added, DTE through the engine system will govern who, how, and when those attachments are made to that pole. And so if you see a pole and you see three or four attachments on there, we may want, and DTE may say, yeah, the pole meets all the load specs. You're not in any, you're not in any worries of tearing down, falling down on somebody's home. You're not going to affect the landscape, we don't have to do any, so on and so forth. And they will say, okay, AT&amp;T, you go first. Then we're relying on AT&amp;T to move. And nobody can move until AT&amp;T moves. And then if WOW is next, then WOW has to go. And they have to get their crew up there, and they have to move and adjust their spot on the pole, and so on and so forth. And then they say, oh, by the way, Comcast, now you can go. That's a real simplified version of it. Understand that nobody here needs, wants to know about that anymore than that lives in my brain. But that is just a, an idea that this is not something where Comcast is, and I, like, look, I'll be frank, like, we're Comcast, okay? I get the jokes. I mean, like I said earlier to some others, there was a Seinfeld about it, okay? We get it. So the idea that people would be waiting on the cable company, yes, 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 we know. And we do try our best to not be the butts of those jokes. But that, I'm not, I guess I make this point not to be evasive, but to, you know, understand that.
There's a lot of moving parts, a lot of the parts that are outside your control, but what you can commit to is to work in good faith, to work expeditiously.
Yes.
And to do it as quickly as, that the mechanics would allow, given all the parties that are involved.
And all of you have my cell phone number now, as you probably found my card somewhere near your mousepad that I put before you arrived. So you can text, harass, hound, bother, or harangue. As I think Aaron would tell you, I'm pretty responsive. I call back and email and so on and so forth.
Questions? Other questions? Commissioner Dubac?
So, Mayor, you're saying work in good faith. Is that not something that we can insert into this contract? Is a drop dead by, done by date? Is that something that's feasible?
Well, there, I guess this kind of goes back to the part I mentioned earlier. They're not, like, one doesn't beget the other. Like, the franchise, I mean.
One is definitely leverage, from the city point of view, to get it done.
Well, that's funny. Counsel?
Well, the manner is pretty funny, so.
Yes. No, no, no. I didn't mean to be, I'm laughing with the counsel, and I guess I'm just looking at, I don't know if he wants me to deliver the news or not.
This is a, again, under the state law, which, the Uniform Video Services Local Franchise Act, any agreement, franchise agreement or renewal, once submitted to the community, has 30 days in which to approve or deny it. And so waiting until late August or even September for a plan, under operation of law, would become effective. And so that's, that's what the law actually indicates. This is the standard template that is used at the state issues, which is the agreement you have before them. There's just a few blanks that a franchising entity, i.e. the city, gets to negotiate and insert, which is the 5% PEG fee, 1%, I'm sorry, 1% PEG fee, 5% and.
Franchise fee.
The other, yeah. And so that's more or less what we have available.
I think we're, Commissioner Dubac was going, maybe you can, you're probably going, sorry. I was wondering, so even if we can't get a specific drop dead date, I mean, can we insert something in this contract saying that Comcast will work diligently in good faith to achieve this as soon as is reasonably possible? Whatever lawyer speak we need to put in there.
Well, it's kind of already approved.
The contract, because of the July 11th meeting, we have actually gone beyond the 30 days. The Comcast was willing to, as a show of good faith, wanted to actually have an executed contract, just so we have something there that actually both sides have ratified.
So there is no recourse if we don't ratify this contract? Is that what you're saying?
It's done.
What date did we get this?
The documents that were submitted to the city were back in, sometime in mid-May. And then they were, then delivered, I guess, eventually to my office in sometime in early June, if I remember correctly. And so, it was right around the Memorial Day weekend, and then that's, now we're in the July 11th meeting. So the 30 days has technically passed. The same thing happened with the first franchise agreement, which you will also note, which I included here. The date that it was actually signed was beyond the 30 days as well.
All right. So we have no leverage at all? So what are we talking about?
It's, if there's not, one of the questions that I have is, here you are, you are guaranteed the 5% annual video service provider fee, a 1% PEG fee, under a agreed upon agreement. If there's not an agreement and they simply file it, the question then becomes, what would become the 5% annual service provider fee or the, and the 1% PEG fee? Would that be something? Because those, those are blank. And so going forward, we would, the process, I mean, we could always file the complaint to try to, I would cover that with the state, but I mean, there's no guarantee.
And I would say to the, to Aaron's point, it is our practice as these, this is, so you know, and I appreciate the chuckle, that is not unusual, and especially with summer rentals. This is not unfamiliar. And then some of your neighborly colleagues would say that I have called them to say, when they send us back something that's signed that didn't include the fees or so on, we, as an article of good faith and an effort towards cooperation and partnership, put in the fee that you had previously. If you didn't indicate affirmatively that you were lowering it or changing it, we simply just use the same one from the prior agreement. So to your point, we're not, we've put in, we've assumed that the intent of the body was to maintain the fees they had unless they'd otherwise let us know. So.
I guess I appreciate, you know, your good faith and commitment to move forward on this, but clearly there are folks at the company above you that are going to be driving those decisions as well. And just wondering, we could get something more ironclad in place, but that's clearly not the case.
I came down here and I've made an effort, and I believe your city staff would support this statement, that I came down here because, I thought it'd be fun for you to kick me around, Kyle. But, no, I, I came down here because I understand that this problem is, exists, and while it won't speak to it in the franchise agreement, I'm happy to put together some correspondence and some follow-ups so that you have something in the file with the franchise that assures you that it is our intent to rebuild the PEG, work with you to do that, and ensure that you have a restored PEG channel from Comcast. And again, you all have my cell phone number, so if you don't see a copy of that at some point, you certainly can call and harass me about it. But I would have, I don't have any problem doing something to that effect for your comfort and be able, for you, Commissioner, and the new Commissioner, to be able to go back to your constituents and say, hey, look, it's not here today, but we have a commitment from them to do that.
Mr. Fenton?
Based on our conversation that I had today with Mr. Miller, I directed IT Director Mike Kirby to reach out to him tomorrow morning to work on what the timeline would be for implementation of this, and then we'll bring that timeline to you, the commission. implementation of this, and then we'll bring that timeline to you, the Commission, when we have it. So at the very least, we can inform you from our side of the table on, and when we think the channel will be restored.
I mean, for me, it's, you know, I'm sure Commissioner Macy's going to go here, like, why is this in front of us if it expired already? You know, if it's past 30 days, you know, why are we, why are we talking about it? Why are we, I mean, I get it, I mean, I get what you're saying, and, Mr. Miller, I take you at full face for, you know, that you're willing to work on it, but, you know, for us, you know, notwithstanding this 30-day thing, we have to, and we think it's good for Comcast too, right? Because many of your patrons, especially those who don't have access any other way to their local government, you know what I mean? This is the way that, you know, they can't come to commission meetings, they, you know, aren't as savvy online, and that is how they keep tabs, that is how they hold us accountable as a governing body, by watching these meetings, seeing the decisions we make, and providing government to folks that, you know, access to government to folks that, you know, may not have all the privileges that all of us folks have here tonight, but being able to make it in. So the challenge is-
To that point, Mr. Mayor, I assure you, I, as a colleague would tell you, a long time ago, when I had hair, I was a county commissioner, and you can be sure if my mother hadn't been able to watch me, there would have been issues. So I can personally appreciate the, that there is very much an audience and viewership for-
Yeah, and I, and I think it's a win for Comcast to figure this out and get the good press and figure out how to use these peg fees and everything like that to deliver this service. I mean, I don't think it's, it's work, it may not be the most profitable work, like a new, you know, sporting contract or whatever, but I think it, it matters, and I think for us, you know, out of the gate, not knowing this 30-day thing, and of course, these things are always layered with other statutory concerns from the state, we just know how that works. You know, a thought would be, as like Commissioner Dubbuck said, just an acknowledgement in there that we're going to work on it, which I think goes a long way and keeps it, holds us all accountable to at least work on it. Because at this point, from what I'm understanding, is we can't do much, because, you know, this is the first time I'm seeing it, I mean, notwithstanding getting the agenda packet last week, but, I don't know. Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I mean, so the great irony of this is that we're arguing for people who can't watch us argue about it because they don't have access to watch us. And it's just hugely frustrating, like, this whole conversation has been frustrating. I appreciate your honesty, I appreciate your being here so we can, to be our punching bag, but it feels like there's plenty of punching to go around, perhaps. It was sort of shell shocked when you said that you hadn't heard from us about it, because we have been aware of this problem for two years, and we've now two and a half city managers that we have said we want this to be fixed right away. And we were given the impression that it wasn't necessarily something that Comcast could fix, but that it's something that the city manager could fix pretty quickly, oh yeah, 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 I was going to get to that, and never did, and never did, and never did. And so we saw this on our agenda tonight, and I think all had the same thought, like, oh, good, now we can get this problem solved through this leverage that we have with this Comcast agreement. And so, you know, we're all kind of getting edging there, and then to find out, oops, we don't even have that because the 30 days has passed, is just unbelievably frustrating. So I, same as everyone else, I'm going to take you as your, at your word. Got this phone number right here, so I, you know, you should be expecting to hear from us, because we do want to get this fixed, and I'm not putting the blame on you for the two years that it's been not on the air, but it's hugely problematic for us, and we want to get it done as soon as possible. So, you know, get to work, or expect some late-night texts.
She does do a lot of late-night texts.
That sounds weird.
She's, she's the reason why I figured out how to silence my phone.
Well, I could, I, you know, thank you, Commissioner, and I, you're always all welcome to communicate however, whenever you'd like, can't always promise a response at 11:30, but, and I can assure you equally, you don't want me out there with the trenching tool or up on the bucket hanging, but nonetheless, I will, like I said, reiterate my commitment. You know, I said at the top that I should have intuitively just reached out to the city, because the logic was, well, yeah, it's on the same, if the schools want it rebuilt, it's the same system, it's the same INET. So I can't speak to your predecessor, the predecessors, my predecessor for this area had not indicated the city of Royal Oak on the list of communities. I, you know, in, in as much as there is a defense for the preceding city managers and so on, I, there were workarounds, there were stopgaps, there were new encoders, there were things you could duct tape and chicken wire it together to keep it up. Why they didn't pursue or follow through or get those done, I, you know, I really can't say, but what I can say is that in this course, in this process, it will be a fiber line that will have a far longer shelf life, and the cost obligations for the city ongoing will be very limited to really just the encoders and the lasers, and those have about six to seven-year life cycles. So they are future-oriented. The fiber that we're building will be, you know, the term "future-proof" is thrown out a lot, I, I'm always a little reluctant, because frankly, I think the last two years have shown us that there's not too much that's future-proof, but, you know, we will build a system that works for you, hopefully into the future with regularity.
Okay, one more question.
Sure.
So is there still a duct tape solution? Because if we've been collecting this 5% or 1% for the past several years, we might have some money to buy some duct tape.
Unfortunately, no. The INET is at the end of life, and that is what brought us to this point and why we are working, I mean, when I, I guess if I could articulate it geographically, this starts up near Auburn Hills and goes right down to Eight Mile Road, and goes all the way to the Macomb County line. So all of those communities, if you think of a map of Oakland County, that sort of triangle going out to Oak Park is INET being rebuilt.
Yikes. I mean, I guess I'll just add a little bit of logic, I mean, you've been on county commission, and you know, and understand, and can read the room how serious we are about making this happen.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I, and I trust you at face, I don't think you would come up here, given your role, to, and give us lip service in that, you know, you can't predict when, but you're definitely going to work expeditiously and in good faith, and, well, we don't necessarily have a contract as leverage. I mean, you know, and this is not a threat by any mean whatsoever, but I think you recognize that by us keeping it on the table, forcing community dialogue, forcing community meetings, and really drawing attention to it, if that, you know, plan drags out, drags out, drags out, and, you know, then there's recourse that we have, I guess you could say, in the court of public opinion, to make sure that this happens. And by no means is that we're not there, we don't think we'll go there, but I mean, I think going back to your management, that, you know, this commitment we take seriously, in that, you know, if we can't put something into this agreement to memorialize it, we always have the court of public opinion in addition to, or in supplement of, such an agreement. Because we really do believe, it's not a knock against Comcast, it's just us doing our job to make sure that our community is engaged, and that, you know, they have the ability to hold us accountable as legislators, so.
Mr. Pennin? I have one question, as I was doing my due diligence on this topic. In discussions with Mr. Kirby, it indicated when, under city manager Don Johnson, that Comcast at one point had thrown out a six-figure dollar amount to rebuild this channel. Now that you're going through this with the school right now, I want to make sure that all of our expectations are set here. Are we looking at a six-figure type cost, or are we looking at a low five-figure cost, which is what I've been hearing-
Yeah, I-
-of the school system?
You know, I can't believe it would be anywhere near six figures. I will say that the, of the list in that triangle, I was, I'm trying to think about a spreadsheet I have on my computer in East Lansing, I believe the most, the priciest of them was in Troy, and I believe that was in the high twenties. And that was in particular because of the route that was required to take. There were obstructions that required an aerial route that we had to do a bit of a jog that added, you know, if you think about fiber ballpark is somewhere in the neighborhood of 35 to 40 a mile. So, you know, if we were extending 15 miles, that's not going to be the situation here, so.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Collo?
So with, I guess frustration at the situation and not at Comcast now at this point, I'm going to move approval of this contract for no other reason than we absolutely have to.
A motion by Commissioner Collo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion, Commissioner Collo.
So once again, the frustration's not at Comcast, I guess. Internally, I think Mr. Pennin and Mr. Leal have heard it here, and I would like a staff follow-up also with us, from the city manager's office and the tour's office, so we can really figure out what happened here and make sure it doesn't happen again, you know? This is, those 30-day windows, we have four meetings between May 2nd and June 2nd, which is very high for a 30-day period for us, so we have four meetings in that time. I'd also like to know how this didn't make the agenda at that time.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, and for, for the benefit of those of us who may be here in nine years and our successor, can we put this on an agenda nine years from now, so we have more than, so that we have, like, oh, no, 13 months to consider it instead of one?
And just, if I could, Mr. Mayor and Council, before you vote, the only thing I, I'll just reiterate for you and the public at large, I will follow up with council, city management, with a letter outlining what we discussed today, our next steps, you can have, while it will not be in so much as the memorial you would prefer necessarily in the franchise agreement, you can have that in the file, you'll, for future councils, they'll be able to reference it. And then all the subsequent information, I will work as manager outlined with your IT director. IT director will get schematics, maps, walkouts, all the pricing, all the invoices, everything else, so that will be entirely transparent for all of you to, to follow up and do your due diligence with.
All right. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you for, Mr. Miller, for willing to come up here tonight, and it's not obviously an obligation, you could have sat back and not said anything or not made any commitments, so we do appreciate that. And, you know, like you say, we take at your word and take Comcast at their word, and I'm sure we'll get this, I think you understand personally the importance of getting it done, and I know you'd be an advocate for us, so really appreciate it.
Thank you all very much, it was, it was a pleasure meeting you, and it's always good to see Commissioner Dubbuck. Thank you very much.
I had a dime every time I heard that. I'd have a nickel. All right, so that brings us to I and J, Commissioner Hunt.
Yes, I guess this is for Mr. Fenton. So in reviewing the request for the amendment to department heads' salaries and benefits, looking at section 33, well, incredibly deserving, I question the need to reduce the vesting period from five years to one year. I think it's a bit drastic, and I think it could be a bit costly, so I question, you know, the rationale for that, that reduction.
I think the overriding rationale for that reduction was as a workforce attraction and/or retention technique, that it's becoming harder and harder to attract department heads, executive department heads into our staffing, and that reducing the vesting period from five years to one years would make us more attractive, when other cities have done that as well.
I don't know if, well, there's not a huge turnover in that type of position that I understand in our city, or at least in our departments. And I feel like that could be quite expensive, as, you know, people vest, they can move along, and they can continue to collect their pension from, from our city, so are there any comparators? Like, what was the, what was looked at in making this determination?
I'd act, I'd have to consult Mr. Brake on that, I didn't personally review his materials on this item, he had just given me the rationale for why they were making that change, and they thought it was a fiscally acceptable change.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'll, does Deborah Lichtenberger, our new finance director, she just had her hand raised, so I don't know if she has a comment on this item.
Just a couple of items. The group that's in question often comes to the city with more experience-
Sir, my comment.
-a later stage in their career. So part of the retention issue is related to that, the attraction and the retention of more experienced professionals in those positions. And as a point of reference, I have seen the vesting period at my former employer, it was a one-year vesting. The cost to the city is really not impacted, the city is making those matching contributions as the employee is, is earning their regular paycheck. So there would be a very limited amount of forfeitures for people that would be leaving in that, within that five-year or one-year window, where there may be a forfeiture coming back to the city. So the, the cost related really would not be impacted, so that the cost to the city would not change.
Thank you.
Commissioner Collo, then Commissioner Macy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, I wanted to celebrate section 24, we're officially naming a new holiday in the city, so how awesome is that? June 13th, starting in 2023, will now be a city holiday, I mean, Royal Oak is embracing our diversity, we're embracing, we're being the best that we can be. So I'm very excited that this is something that's moving forward, and I want to thank the six of you up here and all the city staff, because this is what we've been working for. We've been working to make this a better, more inclusive community, and this is yet another step. So beyond that, section 37, I just want to make sure, Mr. Fenton, we talked about this in our closed session, but I just want to make sure that's not a typo there, that we see a 2002 date, should that be 2022?
It should actually be 2021.
Okay.
But you are correct, that is a typo, and I would recommend approval with the July 1st, 2002 date stricken and replaced with July 1, 2021.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I share the same concerns as Commissioner Hunt about the vesting period drop, and I, I don't, I don't quite understand, I understand the idea that in order to, in order to attract new, experienced elsewhere department heads to our department, this is an attractive change to make. I guess we've seen and heard a lot from our labor council that these kind of benefit things aren't often the difference maker, and it seems to me to be encouraging a really short tenure here at the city, and I don't quite, I mean, five, five, you know, it's kind of meaning about, down to one, I mean, at least three years, I, I don't know, I, having never heard anything about this until it appeared in front of us, I, I'm reluctant. I'd like to, I'm the same as Commissioner Hunt, I'd like to hear more rationale, I'd like to see the comparators. So we've heard there is another city that does this same, but what do the other cities around us do? Is this in fact something that is going to be putting us at an advantage, or, I don't know. It surprised me to see it here, and I guess I wanted to hear more about it, rather than just, here we should do it. So with Mr. Brake not here, in my, I'd prefer to wait on that piece of it at least, until we can hear more from him about the rationale and what they looked at in making that change.
Anybody else? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I guess just considering it, hearing your comments tonight, I mean, if I were someone who had a, you know, 15-year career in my profession, and in my previous job was vested, and then went to a new employer and found out that I was going to have to wait five years to get something that I had already qualified for, I can see where that would be a recruiting disadvantage for us.
Commissioner Collo?
I guess this is starting to seem like a quasi-labor negotiation that I would be more comfortable having with the professionals that we talk about labor and our contract terms with, and it's typically in a closed session, so I guess I would move to postpone this to the next meeting to allow a closed session discussion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Collo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner-
Second by Commissioner Macy. Just a quick point of question, Mr. Leal, is this something we can discuss in closed session prior? Because it's department heads that we would be talking to in closed session about their contract in a way, you know what I mean?
Right, but as the memo indicates, and the second to the last paragraph before the resolution language says, "The executives are not a bargaining unit."
Right.
So, it would, this is a financial issue, not necessarily, unless there was a legal issue involved, there wouldn't be a justification of the Open Meetings Act to discuss this in closed session.
Correct. Just can't say collective bargaining, because it's not.
That is correct. Although, we could, working with outside labor attorney to present a confidential legal attorney-client privilege memo to you that would explain that, which at least would give you the basis for future open session discussion. At least you would have that information already as to what the methodology or what legal issues there may be or not.
And what comparables would be, like that research from an outside labor council, or is, would that not be?
That would be a, a open document.
Okay. Commissioner Macy?
That's what I was going to say, is that, could we get advice from our labor council on this matter? This is, as Commissioner Colo says, the type of thing that for the bargaining units, we tend to discuss in closed session, on the advice of council, who can tell us what the comparators are, what the reasons are, what they've seen about recruitment elsewhere, and the reasons for doing this. So, in my mind, closed session or not closed session, I'd like to hear more about this before voting on it.
I mean, I don't have a problem looking at comparables. You know, I do see the benefit of attracting people, you know, that are experienced and tenured. I mean, that's who you want in your department heads, right? Finding department heads, I mean, one, the turnover is pretty darn low, which takes away the financial implication of the argument, meaning that, you know, if you were circling people in and out every two and a half years, you would build that match over two and a half years, vested, whatever. But typically, you know, you're not turning over your department heads that quickly to cause, like, this financial issue for the city, so to speak, I would think, just based on, based on turnover. And that's only if everybody that you hired as a department head, you know, on date 366, you know, or, you know, or actually, year four, in 364 days, decided to, you know, part ways and, you know, leave and collect, you know, what we matched. Not everyone's going to take a match, and not everyone's going to max out. So, I don't know, I mean, yeah, it's something that we should look at, the financial dynamics a little bit better. I think we heard from our finance director that the costs are, you know, negligible. Commissioners feel more comfortable seeing that map, I think that's appropriate. But, you know, for me, you know, I don't know that we want to go down to the idea that, well, you know, let's go to five years, because that's what it was, and we got to keep people here. It's like, you know, great job, now work harder, you know? You know, that kind of mentality. I think we want to be, we're entering a new world labor market, and I can tell you, in private industry, it's really, really hard to find people. It's going to be exceptionally hard when our department heads retire as well. So, Commissioner Prush?
Just very briefly, I don't have any problem with waiting a couple of weeks to get more information, but I completely agree with our finance director, that it's getting harder and harder and harder to attract good people. If we look back at our own recruiting efforts to hire a city attorney or a city manager within the last couple of years, a really shrinking pool of really qualified people, and it's only going to get worse, because fewer and fewer people are wanting to put up with what we put up with, in terms of serving at city government. So, I mean, I'm willing to wait a couple of weeks for more information, but I'm very comfortable with the way this proposal is set forward today.
I mean, the cost of not having a person fill a role probably far exceeds
Yes.
the cost of a match in the unlikely event that they, you know. Commissioner Dubak?
Commissioner Prush already said what I had to say. Folks need a couple more weeks to feel more comfortable, fine, but I totally understand what we're going for here. I think it's aligned with the priorities we've expressed in multiple strategic planning sessions over the years, that we desperately need to have a strategy around retention and recruitment, and this is a key part of that. It makes sense to me, but if there's no harm in waiting, I don't mind waiting.
Commissioner Colo?
I actually fully agree with Commissioners Prush and Dubak also. I think what we're looking, you know, this is just adding some data behind what we're being asked, and I think that's a fair request and something, you know, it's a deep dive to take into, but I think everyone at this table is completely supportive of our department heads and assistant department heads, deputy department heads, to make sure that they are being taken care of. We do recognize the hardships we have, and this is just, I think, a little bit, tad bit of due diligence on our end, to help everyone understand it and make sure that we are, in fact, doing the best for them and the city. And I don't think waiting two weeks, especially because we're going back, I guess we're not going back to 2002 anymore, but now they're just going, you know, we're going back to 21, so this will be retroactive, so this won't, this won't impact anyone's earnings. So, this is just us taking two weeks to make sure that we're looking at everything once over.
I'd argue part of the due diligence has been done, we just didn't have it as part of the packet with.
Exactly, yeah, so it's presenting it to us.
Yep. Okay. All right, anything else? Commissioner Hunt?
Well, similar to what Commissioner Colo stated, I'm not suggesting that the reduction from five years to one year isn't warranted, and that it is not, you know, there's no policy or statistics behind it. I would just like to see those statistics.
Sure.
In the world of labor, it's really uncommon to see such a drastic change, so, just to make certain that we are doing right by, you know, the fiscal responsibility that we have, I would just like to see that information.
Yep. There's a motion. There's a motion on the table right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we made it.
Hmm?
We made a motion.
Right, yeah. So, any more discussion on the motion? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Wait, what? No, this is Brandon's motion to, isn't this Brandon's motion?
To hold on.
What, the closed session part, two weeks? Okay, so this isn't the closed session motion? I thought there was a separate motion after that.
No, they're all together.
Aye.
The most delayed aye I think in commission history. Those opposed?
You got that, Melanie.
All right.
How is he, yes?
She nodded. So, in a couple of weeks, next closed session, we'll be ready. Dust off the old study. All right. Okay, that brings us to J. Commissioner Hunt, approval to extend Guide House Financial Consulting Services Agreement.
Yes, this is for Mr. Fenton as well. So, Guide House has been in place for, I'm guessing, a year now. I am curious to know what the plan is moving for, and I'm glad to know that, you know, they've only, you know, expended 50 hours, so we're not asking for more money to go back into this contract. And I understand that, you know, over the past year, it took some time to get the final guidelines in place, so that they know exactly what they're working with. But I want to make certain that we will see some action in this upcoming year if we do extend this contract, and if you have any idea of what that action would be.
Coming months.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. So, the majority of Guide House's work with the city has been on the front end, both analyzing the American Rescue Plan Act, giving guidance to the city on that final, the final rules that were issued this year, interviewing the city commission and other interested stakeholders and what their priorities were. And then, we've really pulled them back, and we're working right now on the community outreach strategy, which I believe we'll be bringing to the commission for their approval on this being the correct way to begin community engagement within the next 30 to 45 days. We've, we've already had really, really good substantive meetings on that. At that point, once we agree with what programs we're going to implement through the American Rescue Plan Act, we will be bringing Guide House back in to do the actual administration of those programs. Now, I don't know what those are, depending on the complexities. Some of these we may be able to do in-house, but my guess is the majority, we are going to use Guide House as our administrator of writing these checks to certain groups, or whatever those programs should be. I'm very sympathetic that we have a new finance director on board, and I do not want to burden the finance department right now with an added task, which is, you know, there are cities that have entire departments revolving around Harpul right now. So, short-term, we're looking at having our community engagement process wrapped up this year, and I really am hopeful that by the end of this year, we will have the list of eligible activities for you to consider, for you to approve, and then we're going to move into an administration of those activities in 2024.
Thank you.
Or 2023, and four, and probably five.
Commissioner Macy?
Okay, so I've been confused for many months about exactly what Guide House has done for us and what they are continuing to do for us, so I appreciate the brief update. It does feel like we got the presentation from them in maybe February, and at that time, I asked, and subsequently, I asked again, about how they were going to help with community engagement, and I was told repeatedly, they're not at all, because they're accountants. They're accountants, that's what they do, they're accountants, nothing about program administration and nothing about helping with community engagement, even though I asked a lot. And so, I'm feeling really confused as to what, if they are helping with community engagement, what's been happening between February and July, because we still haven't had any community engagement, nor had any publicity-backed community engagement, or as far as I've seen any plan. And then also, why it's going to take till the end of the year, assuming that things have been happening up until now. And also, for the program administration, like, assuming that we're going to use them, it feels like that would, that's assuming that we're happy with the services they provided on the programs we've asked for them to do, them to do so far, and I'm not totally sure that that's the case. And program administration is a, is a big deal, and they aren't even able to tell us what those potential programs are or might be, which was something I asked them about when they presented to us in February. If you can't name a program, how could you administer it? So, I guess I feel pretty skeptical about this without receiving a presentation from them about the work that has happened between February and now, and what will be happening in the future. You know, I appreciate your update, but I feel like Guide House should have brought something to us, and I think, at least I, but I think many of us at this table have made it clear over time that we'd like to see more from them about what they've been doing for us. This is a big number that we have put aside for their work, and I'd like to see big things, and I don't feel that I have.
I believe I'll answer the community engagement portion first, is, city manager Paul Break, and I agree with his assessment, believed that Siren would be a better entity to handle robust community engagement, and that we would get more of a return on our investment with Siren on that aspect than we would with Guide House, that we may expend more hours in Guide House's contract for the same or lesser result, and let the public relations folks do it, public relations folks do, and let Guide House be solely responsible for administration and analysis of this program. And that's where I said, that decision we had put forth, or I had put forth, at least during strategic planning, a list of potential programs, Mr. Break pulled that back in order to move forward with community engagement, using that as the backbone for what those programs could be. The proposed course of action is going to be both workshopping those programs with the city commission itself, and receiving feedback from the public in a variety of different forums, whether it's via survey, whether it's online, whether it's town hall, whether it's invitation listening sessions. There are a variety of activities we have discussed with Siren, and as I said, we'll be bringing that to you by the end of the summer. It will not go beyond that. At that point, it's really just nailing down what exactly the city commission wants to spend this, this money on, and whether you agree with these programs. And the sooner we can get to that level, the sooner we can bring Guide House in to do the, what I consider the final portion of their contract. I don't think anyone had, I had believed that this would be a one-year engagement, that it would be at least two years at minimum. Because we signed on with Oakland County Cooperative Contract Program, we were stuck with the terms, which was one year with two possible one-year extensions, and that's why we're seeking that additional year today. When we bring back the community engagement plan for your approval, we can also provide information on where we believe Guide House will be going at that level, but we're really, we're really waiting for feedback, both from you and from the public, whether this is the, our proposed course of action is the right course of action.
So, just real quick follow-up. So, Guide House is not helping with community engagement?
Guide House is aware of the engagement that we're doing, but no, they are, they're not conducting it. They are not conducting it, they're aware of it, but they are not conducting it.
Okay.
Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I think when I'm hearing from Commissioner Macy, I feel like I share these concerns. I know there's a lot of activity going on between Guide House and Siren, and a lot of planning on ARPA, and I just don't feel like it's been really communicated well to this body, or to the public. And I feel like if we knew more about that, there'd be less hesitation, this conversation might not be happening right now. Like, if we, you know, I'm sure there's probably weekly meetings, bi-weekly meetings, some frequency meetings, but we have no idea about that. Like, I happen to know that, because I was in an office one day, you know, here, and I saw someone that's going on to the meeting and heard that. But if there were a little bit more regular updates, this is a large program, that is going to be a very short period of time, too, right? I mean, we don't have many years left to spend the ARPA funds, there's going to be a lot of fury working out here. So, I think more regular updates on this would alleviate a lot of this tension.
They need to be obligated by the end of 2024, but the funds, the time to spend the funds go to 2026, so we do have fund on it. The decision-making part is difficult, and I would say that City Royal Oak is not in a position that's unique. Oakland County, State of Michigan, Wayne County, the majority of these governmental entities have not spent more than 10% to 20% of their funds, because they're going through the same analysis that we are right now. We're waiting to see where there's opportunities for us to leverage some of the funding that we have with other programs that are out there, and I can tell you, there have not been a lot of programs released yet. The MEDC announced last summer a revitalization and placemaking ARPA program, and the rules and the terms of it came out in May of this year.
So, I think, at least on my end, if we had, and this is hard, you know, I know this isn't your job, per se, you're sitting in for the city manager tonight, but a city manager update on this on a regular basis, I think, would solve a lot of these issues for the commissioners, and then maybe, you know, Guide House or someone could come tell, you know, the letter said, you know, hey, let's, let's re-up them, but an explanation of what's been going on, like the one you provided, would probably be really beneficial also.
Anybody else? Commissioner Dubak? Thank you, Mayor. I feel like we've kind of been around and around with staff about this multiple times, and I think the answers have been consistent and the same, that we're moving forward strategically and deliberately with this partner. If we need more regular readouts, that's fine, but I'm comfortable with the amount of intel they've gathered from us about our priorities. The first list of possible projects was all right, but we know that they're coming back a little bit more detail after we give them some feedback, and they really haven't billed us a ton of hours yet in this last, since we brought them on, so they're operating in good fit. So, I'm willing to let the staff stay the course and not micromanage this too much, because I feel like there's a sense of urgency at the table to get these dollars allocated and spent, but I'd rather spend them right and as effectively as humanly possible versus get a plan out so I can, you know, lift it up and say, look what we did. We had time, we had until 2024 to appropriate, 2026 to spend, so let's, let's do it right. I'm, I'm, I'll move to approve the contract. Motion by Commissioner Dubak, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush? Discussion? Commissioner Macy?
I'll just say again, having no idea what's been going on since the last very unsatisfactory report in February, I won't be able to support this motion.
Well, and I, I'll just say, okay, Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll, I'll just add to Commissioner Dubak's comments here, 52.8% of the original contract has been billed, so it's not an unsubstantial amount of hours. In fact, we're one year in of, as you point out, we have until 2024. We have two years left, but only 50% of our contract, and not clear vision on what's been spent on and what's left coming up. So that, I think, once again, kind of similar to the other conversations we've had already tonight, it's more insight into what we need, you know, what's coming up, what's been done, and what do we have to do next. So, I think, you know, there has been a substantial amount, more than half of our dollars have been spent, and we have two years left.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, this is one of these instances, we kind of talked about a little bit ago, but I highly recommend the city manager open himself up to it. If you guys want to set up time, you know, to get, like, if ARPA really want to understand, he's not here, but I think he'd be more than willing to kind of go deep, answer your questions, and get you the type of, if it's on his Friday email or whatever. I can't speak for you guys, I don't know, you know, I know, I don't know what I know that you don't know, but I would think that if there's something you're really interested in knowing and understanding and staying apprised of... and staying apprised of, that invitation was given to all of us by the city manager. And if there's something specific you want, I know he'll work to get it done. If he doesn't, then that's another problem. But, you know, I take him at his word.
It'll go to me then.
It'll go to you? Okay, so Mr. Fenton's nodding, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that offer, but when this comes before us at the commission table, I'd like to have that information here at hand with someone who's able, I mean, Mr. Break isn't here, and so we can't ask him about it. But it does not seem like it's incumbent on me to go chasing him around to asking, ask him, are they doing their job? What have they been doing? What have they been doing? If they're presenting for a renewal of the contract, I should have that information right here, and I don't.
Right. But you could ask for a million things, but we get the agenda on Tuesday, and we get it published Thursday. And, you know, we can say, hey, for Monday, I'd like to have this information. You know, that's sometimes helpful, because they're guessing sometimes at what we want.
They're guessing that I want information on what this contractor that we want to renew their contract has done? Feels like not a hard guess to make.
I mean, they didn't provide it, and I'm sure that's not because they're circumventing anything. It's because you have to be direct if you want something specific.
Commissioner Collo?
I guess I'm swinging, just swinging with Commissioner Macy now. I'll be very direct. Anytime we're asked to renew something, I would like milestones and guidelines to know why we're being asked that. I think that's kind of a fair ask that Commissioner Macy's making here, that we're just asking what's been done, and let's renew it. That's, it's a very fair ask also. I think, I think renewing Guide House is not a bad idea. Just knowing what's happened with any contract, knowing what's happened, knowing what's up next, I think is a very fair ask of the body that's in charge of making sure we spend our money wisely.
Sure. But, you know, do you want a 700-page report? Do you want a few questions answered? Like I'm saying, if you, it's incumbent upon us as well as commissioners to be, you know, if you're unhappy with this, or when you get the agenda, if you decide that you want more information, I think it's perfectly acceptable to say, this isn't what I would expect. I need you to bring this additional information to the table or send it to me. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying what you're expecting is good or bad. I'm saying we had a few days, you know, anytime you see a situation like this, at least give the team a chance to provide you what you need. Commissioner Collo?
I guess I'll also add that we regularly don't, against our own commission rules, don't receive packets on time. We're supposed to receive anything over two pages on a Tuesday, and that doesn't happen on a regular basis. So, well, it's again, I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, but then let's make sure that everything's working like clockwork then.
Oh, I'm not going to defend staff all the time, but I'm saying we do demand a lot out of them. And sometimes you're going to have folks that are on vacation. Sometimes you're going to have situations where a lot more. The alternative is, you can delay and push issues if you don't have it. So if you prefer to have that, where we push things out, we can do that as well. But I'd say it's only fair if you have issues. I would pick up the phone and call the city manager and talk directly. And just say, hey, you know, even when he gets back from vacation, say, I don't think this was enough information in the packet. Let me tell you what I would expect in something similar to this, because people can't fix things unless they are aware of it. And that's all I'm suggesting. Not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying, what I do, for me, that makes me feel comfortable is I talk to the city manager and ask questions at home.
Their no minds are being changed here. Shall we vote?
If you want to call the question, you can call the question.
I'll call the question.
Okay.
Passions and call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, one no. All right, that brings us to item seven, public library request to fill vacancy. As soon as everyone's here, Director Irwin. Lauren, we got, we got the leadership team here.
I don't know if I qualify for that yet, but. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Lauren Jusinski. She is one of our board of trustees, and we are, we wanted to talk about this request for a position so that people understand how we go about creating full-time positions in the library, especially since this is a new position that would come out of fund balance. So first, Lauren's going to share some perspective from the board, and then I'll share it as the director. Lauren?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us in tonight. We're really excited about this opportunity to share some of the things that we've been working on. I actually just attended a training in Farmington today, where there was a lot of kind of like shared drama within boards. So I was really, really proud of the way that we're operating and getting things done and some of the things that we're prioritizing. The most important thing that we've worked on recently is that the board and the staff have committed to moving to a full-time staffing model. So as vacancies have occurred, as part-time positions have become open over the last few years, we've been rearranging those hours, moving people into different positions, so that in the last fiscal year, we were able to take all of those part-time vacancies and leverage them into full-time positions. I'm sure that you can understand the quality of work that comes out of that. As we recover from the pandemic, it answers a lot of questions as to people's consistency with work. It values the time that they've put into being staff members for us, and just the overall value add, right, that that puts to having committed full-time members in our staff. We've also recently discussed and approved our budget for the upcoming year. Our budget subcommittee had discussed the options of creating a full-time librarian one position after a part-time vacancy had occurred, actually just last week, even though it had been in the works for a little bit. During our last monthly board meeting, we did vote to approve that full-time position, leveraging that newly, the newly vacant part-time hours into something that we were already planning for. So, like we said, that's just something that we've been working on. We're really proud to have been able to do that. And Sandy's going to tell you a little bit more about who we've filled those positions with, too.
So last year, as you know, we started out with a conversation of having one full-time municipal clerk added to the library. And as we did the finances, we saw that for the same cost of adding one new clerk, we could actually add two, once we promoted two of the part-time staff that we had that interviewed and interviewed at the top of the interview process. When we looked at that, we said, well, we could actually add a third and still stake those part-time savings, we didn't refill part-time positions, and move those costs into adding full-time positions. So I feel that the board, the board budget committee, and myself, we've been very smart about leveraging those part-time hours into full-time positions. So when we had this vacancy come up for a librarian one, we said, let's see what it will cost. And we are leveraging those part-time hours. Our intention, this position is different. It is not a, does not have to go through the same process as a municipal clerk position. Our intention is to promote from within, to take staff who are currently working for us, and to move one staff person into a full-time position. If that happens, then we will take those part-time hours and use them toward that full-time position. So you're taking the part-time hours of two staff people and creating it into one. There will be a cost. The costs that are in this number are not exact, because I got, finance gave us starting level and mid-level, and the person, the people who are in this position are above the minimum level, but not at midpoint. So they will be more accurate figures once we get somebody actually hired into that position. But it's, again, another way to take part-time people and make them into full, full-time people, and to honor the work that they've done. And so we wanted, we thought it was very important to explain that to the public so they can understand what we are doing, and the absolute pride that our staff who have been promoted into full-time positions this year are working hard and doing many great things for us, and are really, really feel valued. And I think that's really important as an employee, to feel valued in your work.
Several of them have actually come to our most recent board meetings as we've made these positions official, to thank us in person and to, you know, say how much it means. And just that consistency, you know, being able to count on the hours, being able to count on the support and, you know, knowing that there's a job and a place and that it's not going anywhere, is really, you know, we can understand. I did like what you said about things not being future-proof right now, that I think the pandemic taught us a lot about how workforces operate, and I think this is a good move.
Commissioner Macy?
Thank you. So everywhere I go, people are talking about how fantastic the library is, the programs, the people. We just hear it constantly, like this, it's like the glowing gem in the middle of the city that people, everybody knows about the library. People can name individual staff members, and they do. And they, and they, everyone, everyone I know just glows when they talk about the library. And so being able to move those people who've been with us and worked with us into these full-time positions, and is aligning with our strategic plan to do that exactly, to have a happy staff that wants to be there and we're able to retain over time, it's just so important. We have all the time, this problem where we lose part-time people because they get full-time jobs at other libraries. And so it's been a, it's been a, you know, a cycle where we keep having to kind of backfill all these part-time positions. So as we move these part-time positions to full-time positions, we're creating that place for them to stay in the library that they already know and are happy to be in. So I'm so thrilled that we've been able to do this several times now, and we're keep creeping forward. And I'm really appreciative to Sandy for doing the math and figuring this out so that we can kind of slice these various different positions together to create a full-time position that keeps our staff happy and at Royal Oak. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Collo?
Commissioner Macy heard all those things in my house, probably.
The good things about libraries.
Yes, that's all I talk about, the end of the city. I'll just say that, you know, having spent years on the budget committee, too, this is something that is not just like new overnight. We had looked at this for such a long time, and the math wasn't always adding up. And, you know, this is important to recognize, you know, there've been many great librarians who are no longer in aides, and a lot of great employees who moved on and found full-time positions at other libraries are a loss and their gain. But, you know, this is a great staffing model. And, you know, one thing about approving this tonight, I think two things are important. One, the charter, charter's kind of clear that the library board gets a point and fix their employees and the salaries. So this is, it's the board recommendation. I have no reason to vote no to this. But, yeah, second, you know, the library is completely funded by the taxpayers through millage. You guys operate within one mill every year. That's been slowly rolled back for the, you know, 10, 20 years mill's been operating. But that millage is your complete revenue source, and what's going to fund this position and all the positions at the library before, correct? This, you guys are completely funded by the mill.
Eighty-eight percent. I mean, eighty-eight point something percent. Otherwise, we'd get penal fines, which is in the state constitution. We get some donations, and we get state aid to libraries, which is dependent on us getting at least three-tenths of a millage of local support. So those are other smaller sources of income. We are primarily funded by our millage.
And penal fines, to be clear, are not late fines. They're not fines for keeping a book too long, because we don't charge people that, do we?
No, we don't. We don't charge late fees. Penal fines are coming from the courts. And as we know, as we go through social justice changes in our, in our state and in our nation, penal fines are becoming less and less. It's not something we, nobody likes relying on penal fines, but they're given to us in the constitution, so we'll take them. But those keep going down as we look at how people are sentenced to fines in our justice system. So that's something that I don't like relying on, and, but they do go down year after year.
So everything, all the awesome things you do, from all the programming, the books that you buy, the homebound services for seniors, the computers, et cetera, all come from their millage, which is going to be used to help fund this position, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just add, nice work. This is a good plan. I was a little surprised, though, because my intuition would be that folks would be looking for more part-time, you know, less committed work. But I think that in your situation, you've created such a positive and exciting work environment that folks want to be there full-time, right? Because if it wasn't a good place to work, and a fun place to work that had a mission and was delivering on that mission, I don't think you would have people stepping up from the part-time position saying, I want to be full-time here. So I think, you know, there's a hidden compliment, a hidden testimony to how the board and the director are running the library that makes people want to step up and give more hours and have more security for all the personal reasons. But there is this, in private industry, where you have sometimes the opposite problem, where people are like, no, I want to be part-time, you know? So really interesting, and I think a testament to your management.
Well, thank you. You know, we look at our part-time staff, and many of them are part-time here and part-time someplace else. So they're working multiple part-time jobs to have a full-time income, and they don't get any benefits. And so I think that when you create a full-time position, they can quit that other part-time job
Yep.
and get the benefits that they worked so hard for and that they deserve. Health insurance, dental insurance, vision, vacation, paid holidays, those are all really important to people working.
And just, just the amount of energy they spend trying to manage that is now put back into their work and put back into the community, you know? I mean, to me, that's a huge, that stress that, you know, all of that complication now gets streamlined and like, look, I'm here, I'm focused, I'm dedicated, and your productivity will go up significantly, I imagine.
And you can do so much more when you're full-time in one place, because then you're dedicated
Yep.
to, to that place and that vision and to that community. And when people become full-time, they just, their work habits change, they realize how much more they can do, and we help them live up to their potential so that they can really, truly make it a career and a career that's dedicated to the citizens of Royal Oak.
Wonderful, wonderful. Any other comments?
May I add, can I add to this topic?
Sure.
About the brownfield in the millage language, just so people understand that really quickly?
I was going to do that.
We have a question about the brownfield.
Is it okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
So when our attorney asks us if brownfield is captured by the city, we asked the city, and we were told, yes, it is captured. $17,000 came out of our budget last year for brownfield, out of a $3 million budget. So it was one-half of 1% of our overall budget. It was $17,068, and I believe 22 cents, but don't quote me on those cents. That amount varies every year. I am not an expert in brownfields. I am just going to copy and paste information from government, but I put it all on our ropl.org/millage page, so people can read that information for themselves. And we are not the only millage that is captured in the city. So it, everybody's subject to brownfield millage capture. Our attorney said, I'm putting that language in there, and that is what we put in that language. So please know that it is a very, 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 very small portion of the library's budget that goes towards the brownfields. Thank you.
And it's already been happening.
And it's always been happening.
Yep.
It's been happening since brownfields were formed. We've had a millage for 20 years. I did not go back 20 years. That would take a lot of work in the treasurer's office to ask them to go back 20 years. I was able to get last year's figures for everybody. And I put it on our website. So if people have questions about that, they can certainly contact me at the library. I'm open to speak with anybody.
Commissioner Prush?
I had just made those notes, and I was going to say the same thing, because capturing one-half of 1% of the budgeted revenue that you collect is just a drop in the bucket. $17,000 per year out of a $3 million budget is just pennies. I mean, it's just nothing. So with that, and knowing how extraordinary the library is and how much we all love it, I will move approval of this resolution approving the hiring of this position.
Motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion?
I'll just add, it's going to be great to see friendly faces and see them more often now. So that'll be great. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening. Thanks so much.
All right. This brings us to public hearing of assessment, special assessment paving of Parkdale Avenue. I see the distinguished city engineer, Donahue, present to, I imagine, kick us off, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Fenton?
Good evening, Mayor and city commissioners. Tonight is the final step of our process to get the paving of Parkdale Avenue started. This is between Rochester Road and Ardmore. So tonight's hearing is for a public hearing of assessment on the special assessment role. After that, if the city commission wishes to move forward, there's no need for action tonight. We'll just move forward with design and getting the project out to bid, probably this January. So my only caveat to that is, we all know prices are going up very high. If our bids come back and they're within 5% of the quotes that we gave all the residents, we'll just move forward and recommend approval. If we're above that, which I definitely could see happening, we did build some contingency in there, but just want to put that out there. If that is the case, we'll come back to you. We'll have another public hearing of assessment to make sure all the residents know about it, are fully informed before we move forward with that.
Questions? Ms. Donahue, Commissioner Collo? I'm sorry, I can hear. Was that 5%, you said?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, well, we will pause questions for right now and open up the public hearing. Is anyone here tonight to speak? Yes, sir. Come on up. Well, you're here to give the public comment. If you want to ask rhetorical questions...
If you want to ask rhetorical questions when we close the public hearing, we'll be sure to ask them. I'll write down those questions.
Well, basically, and I'll be fast.
Can we get your name?
John Austin, 431 Parkdale. I got this estimate. My big problem here is that everyone's paying the same amount. What happened to the foot rule? The person, people across my street, they got 100 feet of frontage, I got 50 approximately. And we're paying the same price. When you did our sidewalk, it was the foot rule. I had 50 feet, I paid for 50 foot. I didn't pay for 100 foot. And now all of a sudden, I'm subsidizing my neighbors who've got twice as much footage as I do. And that's my, and this can't be right. Was it just an estimate that is going to be looked at again or, you know, because this can't be right? And that's my question, what's going on?
Okay.
Okay? That's it.
That's it? All right. Mr. Austin, we'll get that question answered for you. Anybody else wish to speak at the public hearing tonight? For once? Going twice? All right, we'll close the public hearing and bring the discussion back up to here. We had a gentleman ask a question. I'm not sure. I guess we'll get the answer. Ms. Donahue.
Sure. So he's correct that normally when we do a special assessment paving project, we charge it per foot because most people have nice rectangular lots and that makes a lot of sense. On Parkdale, there's a few very odd lots. I think one of them has only like 10 feet of frontage and then it backs up and then widens to 50 feet or something in the back. And we couldn't figure out a fair way to really assess that because they're getting the full benefit of the road. The frontage is really just the width of their driveway and that was it. So we worked with the city assessor and as a staff recommended that we do this by benefit unit. So yes, the total cost is distributed amongst the special assessment district evenly per property. That's something the commission could change if you wish to, but that's what we brought, starting with standard resolution one as our recommendation.
Okay, and that's, just to reiterate, that's primarily driven by the uniqueness of the property shapes and dynamics and without, what's the rule we sometimes use? I forget the name of the rule.
Somers' Rule?
Somers' Rule.
Or Salmer's Rule?
Split the baby.
I don't understand it. I'll be honest.
Okay. Somebody needs Salmer created the rule and some people just used it and adopted it as if, but it's sort of like that doesn't even really apply here because everything's just kind of wonky.
Correct.
Got it. And you're saying, hey, it's fair because you're having a paved road to get access to your property, so we're dividing it equally because everyone has paved access to their personal leasement.
Correct.
Questions?
Ms. Collo.
I mean, I'm sorry, I believe you said we've seen these prices since special assessment one, correct?
Yes.
These prices have been set for quite a while now?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, and we know in the petition as well, that was presumably circulated. I'm not sure, but.
It was signed. It was signed, right?
Oh, yes. I don't know if this gentleman signed it or not, but we had, I think it was 54% in favor, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No motion. It's just the public hearing, right? Okay, so if it goes above 5%, you'll be back?
Correct.
If it stays under, you'll get it done.
Yes.
Awesome. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Donahue.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So this brings us to item nine, which is an ordinance creating the Humans Rights Commission first reading.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. This ordinance that you have in front of you is very similar to what we discussed last meeting. We did make a couple of changes specifically around the membership. So you all had asked to have a lower number overall reflected, and that's what you see in the ordinance. The task force, upon listening to that conversation, was still interested in having a little bit more of a mix potentially between our resident members and potentially non-resident members. So the way that it's worded is still kind of a four-to-three potential ratio. It does, in the ordinance, allow you to, it doesn't say you have to have non-residents, it gives you that option. And so that would be up to the appointments committee whenever those appointment positions came open. So I wanted to make you aware of those two pieces. And then with this, we got some clarification from the city attorney's office on Friday. The supermajority was a point that you guys had asked for around the dissolution of this committee at any point in the future. And I believe, Mr. Leal, maybe you would like to expand on that, but.
I separately recommended to the city commission that such a supermajority vote would is, is, would probably not survive a legal challenge. It's, that language would be inconsistent or contrary to the charter, which has written, I'll quote the charter language. Chapter five, section two, "The adoption of any ordinance with emphasis on any by the city commission shall require for the passage, its passage, the concurrence of majority of all the members of the commission." Since there are seven members here, all that is necessary is four. Since a ordinance provision, which would include a supermajority vote, is inferior to a charter requirement, I do not believe that including the supermajority vote would prevent a future commission from passing a simple, an ordinance using a simple majority to amend it or and/or repeal that ordinance. As you recall, this is an ordinance and in order for a future commission to, to change anything, it would have to pass an amendment or a repeal that was just to get rid of it. So for those, for that reason, I do not recommend that a supermajority vote provision be inserted or remain in the draft ordinance that Susan Barkman has prepared for this commission.
Just to reiterate, because it just wouldn't stand up to the charter.
That is correct.
The charter is very clear on all ordinances.
Yes, the way it is written, yes, it is clear.
Okay. Susan Barkman, I don't know if you were finished or you were just doing an audible on that.
So if the commission would like, you could just repeal section, or eliminate section eight and we would renumber for the second reading if that's how you all wanted to move forward this evening. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Dubb.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for your timely work on this. This is a really quick turnaround on getting this ordinance back to us. I see you've incorporated a lot of our feedback. So I just had a couple of questions. One, I totally agree, like the supermajority thing just doesn't work. We know from multiple conversations, it's a table, we can't bind a future commission or prevent them from making a decision.
Try.
So that definitely needs to come out. Let's see. On the non-resident membership, I just want to be clear that this is not an all-encompassing list where it says, you know, such as business owner, like say, is that subject to the discretion of the appointments committee to say, "We think this person is a stakeholder, you think they attend church here, they volunteer here?" That, that's good.
Yes, that, we tried to give some examples, but it's not necessarily intended it would be up to the appointments commission and ultimately you all.
Okay, and this make, this language makes that sufficiently clear that the appointments committee has discretion beyond the items listed to define stakeholder.
I believe so. Let's see if there are any objections.
Yes. It's such as, the use of the term such as is, as an example of the type of people that you would be looking for, but it's not, doesn't limit you to only those one, two, three types of categories listed.
Okay. All right, great. And then, shoot, I have one more question, but now it's escaped my mind. Oh, when it says, oh, accepting contributions. So I brought this up last time. What does it mean for this entity to accept contributions? Into what fund are they accepting contributions? Where do those dollars go? What are they used for? Who's directing them?
So we would need to work with finance to determine where that would best be suited. And I, the commission for the arts, for example, goes, it has a, an account in the Roots Fund, so it could potentially go there, but we would work with finance in order to get that all set up.
Okay. I'm sorry, does that need clarity in the ordinance language into an established city fund?
You could certainly add that language if you want for clarity's sake, but other entities that this commission has created do not have that type of language, but we have, the staff have created special accounts for, for those particular commissions or entities.
Okay. All right, so this language then is sufficient to oblige staff to make the necessary legal setup to allow this body to have a fund and collect dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. All right, that's, that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
I'd just like to ask a, maybe get an answer on the second part of Commissioner Dubb's question. The authority to spend the money would be similar to like the arts where they would have to come in front of the city commission with their recommendations and then we would approve that, that spending. Correct?
Yes, unless you all set up something differently. So there are a couple of cities that have theirs set up a little bit differently than what I think you all have done in the past, where they, the city council in that case, allocates a certain dollar amount to the commission for grants around events and things like that. And I don't believe those require any additional approval, rather just maybe a report. So it could be something that as we kind of go through and like really look at the programming of what this commission could do, we may kind of dive into some of those.
We could, but that's, that can be handled as a layer of policy on top of the ordinance for the spending.
Yes.
We don't need to embed that. Okay.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'll just add my support for the elimination of the supermajority provision. You know, you look at what happens in, in Congress when they've got a, you know, with the whole filibuster thing and need, I mean, a majority vote is a fair way to decide things. And if the tenor of our community is so different at some future date that a majority of the residents of that community, or at least a majority of the commissioners, don't want this ordinance, then that will be the will of the people.
Ms. Bruce?
I'm also in support of taking it out, not only because it clearly seems to violate the charter language, but I don't want to give someone who is not happy with this the golden opportunity right now, if it's approved, to challenge this legally and put a roadblock in terms of getting it implemented just because they think it violates the charter. I mean, I don't want someone filing a lawsuit two weeks after this is final and actually in, in working form to say, "Oh, I think it violates the charter. This is why it does, so I'm going to file a lawsuit." And then we're tied up in circuit court for two years fighting a lawsuit. So let's take that out of there now, even though we believe that it's not really an enforceable thing. Don't give somebody an opportunity to take this down just because the language is in there. So I think it's got to come out.
Anybody else? Commissioner Collo?
Thank you. So getting back to the funds for a moment, reading the language of the commission for the arts, the establishing ordinance, there's a, there's a sentence about how the funds are public funds and shall be reserved for the purpose of this chapter. So maybe I would consider it's section C of 36-7. So if you look through the commission for the arts ordinance, that might be a language to insert so that any money raised by this commission is used by this commission, used for this commission. So if a big donation comes in, you know, we've had the library, there's a lady who left $100,000, which actually led to the Tribune project that was developed, where we're now on Michael Fish. That was because of a donation. So I'd be interested in adding that language so that the funds generated, you know, donated to this are used for this. And then the last comment I'll have here is, this is a little technical here, but looking at, there's an annual report on the work functions and services for each year. I know other commissions typically have a date that that's set to, that we would get, you know, December, January are really busy here because, you know, the, once again, the library comes up, the commission for the arts come up, we have a lot of reports to us. So I would like to set a month to that also, just so that we, if not, it's easy to slip away and forget like, oh my gosh, when did we let, you know, when did we do the last one? So like just set a date so that we know when it should come back to us. And I think staff can pick that before they come back for a second reading.
How do you feel about June or July?
Let's talk about something in summertime.
Okay.
Anybody else? Ms. Bruce?
I'll move approval of this on first reading with the removal of section eight.
Motion by Commissioner Bruce, second by Commissioner Dubb. Did that include all the changes discussed also?
Yes.
Okay. Which changes?
The extra line, similar to the arts.
Yeah, similar to the arts one? Okay.
And adding a date at the choice of the, and adding a date to the report.
Yes, yes.
Okay, discussion. I mean, I'll just add that, you know, it was worth a shot looking at section eight, but yeah, I agree with the charter provision based on what Mr. Leal said, you know, getting a challenge, and what Commissioner Bruce said, getting a challenge right out of the gate is worth the risk. While I agree with Commissioner Douglas, if a commission does agree at a later time that our value system changes and they want to get rid of this ordinance or make it useless, I guess, but that's kind of the, you know, kind of crazy thing when you try to protect the rights of humans that may not have the voice or power to vote on their own behalf because, you know, you have weird things going on with, with the majority. But, you know, we can do what we can do within the limits of our charter and that's what we'll do. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, great work, Ms. Barkman and team. Thank you again to members of the task force. I think what we'll have is a second reading come back next meeting and then from there we get 10 days before the ordinance goes into effect?
Yes, so we would do second reading next meeting and then we would begin advertising with potentially filling, I'm going to say October. Okay?
We'll see.
Back on the line.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. All right, making progress tonight. Ah, I feel like it's worth celebrating a little bit more, but it's, all right, let's get a clap. First reading. All right, let's, you know, just a little clap.
Stop stealing the fun.
Golf clap. Golf clap, okay?
Fun governor over there.
All right, so that brings us to approval of Parks, Forestry, Recreation, Playgrounds and Animal Shelter Millage final ballot language. I know we pushed this one off a little bit. Mr. Patton?
Yes, this is an update from the June 13th city commission meeting where the city commission did approve the language for the Parks, Recreation, Forestry, Playgrounds and Animal Shelter Millage ballot language. The action item from that meeting was to have the city attorney send that draft language to the Michigan Attorney General's office, which happened. There were some very minor changes to the language that were made by the Michigan AG, namely eliminating a typo in the, in the language. So the action that's being sought today from the city commission is to give our city clerk permission to move on to the next step of transmitting a copy of this proposal and the resolution of the governor and to the attorney general for review and approval and that the city clerk shall also publish the current text of the sections of the charter, propose for amendment or deletion of the proposed texts of the charter amendments and changes in accordance to Michigan law. And finally, that once approved by the governor, the proposed charter amendment proposal be placed before the electors at the general election scheduled Tuesday, November 8th of 2022.
Questions?
Ms. Collo? I just have one easy one. I don't know if this is for the clerk or for Mr. Patton or Mr. Leal, but the title of this typically don't charter proposals, anything we vote on, it's proposal A, proposal one, proposal something. Is the title correct on this or does it need to be, will be changed at the county level, at our level, who's, or is this it?
What you approved tonight is what will go on the ballot. So it's up to you as far as your title goes, if you want charter proposal A, one, two, or what you want the title of the proposal language to be.
So then there'll be multiple proposals, correct, on the November ballot? Do we have names for any of them yet, or are any of them transmitted to the county yet?
The last one was the senior millage, and that's already been approved. It has not been submitted to the county yet, but it has been approved by this body.
Does it have a letter, number? It just says?
No, it doesn't.
Melanie, I thought that the county didn't want us to put numbers on their letters until, because of the other ballots that were coming through with, on the state level.
They don't care what we put on there, we can put whatever we want.
So it's one and two, or A and B?
Well, yeah, we just haven't named any of them yet, so.
But she's saying.
It usually just happens.
Yeah, well, I think, I think what, I think what Commissioner Collo is getting is what we approved tonight is going to be what they're called, and if you wanted to call it proposal two, approval of Parks Recreation, or proposal B, or proposal A, that would be the time to do it versus, but we didn't do it on the senior one, so therefore.
Can we change it on the senior one still?
It hasn't been submitted yet.
Google Commissioner Bruce and then Commissioner Dubois.
But that's going to make the title even longer than what it is here. It'll be like proposal two. Yeah, but then it's still, the heading of it will still be much longer than what is necessary. I mean, the language that I think is important is Parks, Recreation, Playgrounds, and Animal Shelter Millage, that's what's going to get people's attention. They're not going to care whether it's one or two, or A or B, or whatever.
Right.
And especially if there's going to be state proposals on the ballot as well, which also might have a number or a letter. It's just going to be confusing. So if this, if this were an election where there were just city charter proposals or millage proposals, like the August ballot, having a numeric designation or an alphabet designation would make sense, but now that, I remember now that because we're dealing with November, not August, and there's going to be state, even potential county issues, as well as school board races, I don't think there's going to be a school millage.
There is.
Well, then there's, then there's going to be a school millage as well, and they may put in their proposal, you know, oh, we're going to be number four. I would, initially I thought the number system made sense, but not when there's going to be so many other jurisdictions throwing millages on the ballot, or ballot issues of some type.
Commissioner Dubois and Commissioner Macy? I guess I'm confused, I thought they're just, because there's, you know, there's going to be, you know, state proposal one, state proposal two, state proposal three, and then in our section, there's going to be like city proposal one, and then the name, right? And then city, isn't that how it happens?
Actually, our previous city manager was always against proposal A, proposal B, proposal one, he'd always want just the title, so that's usually what we have on the ballot.
That's weird. I swear we've had numbers before.
Which is last year?
We had proposal A or B.
We voted no on four to make sure we could have the park across the street.
What?
We voted no on four last year.
Was it seven?
It was strangely named seven.
It was seven.
But I don't remember taking action and naming anything seven, or naming it four.
I think it came to us with the names on it.
It came to us with the name. They just called it four?
They, the city.
That's what I'm saying.
Staff picked the name.
Didn't require our action to number them.
The Charter Review Committee sent it to us numbered, and then we approved some number of them that already were numbered one through seven. We didn't approve five and six, which is why it went from like one, two, three, four, seven, or something.
That's right. Yeah, I think the Charter Review kind of set the numbering thing, and then when we got that one and put it on the ballot, I think it just added the number to keep with that cadence and sequence of what the Charter Review Committee had, what we did through the Charter Review Committee. Yes.
So just a question for the clerk. I mean, I feel like we're now turned around in a circle, like, do they norm, are we supposed to put letters and numbers? Like, is it weird if we approve it like this, or is this the way we've always done it, and it's fine? Because it feels to me like the same as someone else, that Commissioner Dubois said that they always have letter I, and we always thought they did, and I thought that was magically happening, and I guess I didn't realize that it was what we approved specifically in this language. So I guess I'm, with your memory of the ballots before, not trying to put you on the spot, but do they normally, here and elsewhere, have A, B, C? Is it weird?
State proposals always have a number.
The city ones?
It's.
It's just up to the city?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, now I'm confused. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but now I'm confused about what I want to do.
Well, if anyone's opposed to them, I guess they have to go out and say, saying no on two, they have to say no against seniors, no against parks. I guess, you know, there is a marketing element to that that is unfavorable to those against it.
Ma'am?
Commissioner Douglas?
Well, and it's also the fact that this, one is a charter proposal, and one is just millage proposal, so you can't really say charter proposal one and then.
Millage proposal.
Millage proposal one?
Yeah. Commissioner Bruce?
I will move approval. Because as we had said before, nobody's going to change their mind. I will move approval of this resolution with the charter language as presented to us in this memo, including the title.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Bruce, second by Commissioner Macy, discussion. I have proposal one on this, no, I'm just kidding. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. So those who are against and those who are for are going to have to put their creative minds on if they start campaigns for or against, won't be so easy, list in a letter or number. All right, that brings us to item 11, discussion on community benefits ordinance.
I can kick that off. So this item came about after the June 13th, 2022 city commission meeting where a motion was made requesting staff to bring a development scorecard that would be used to demonstrate what an ideal community benefit would be for planned unit developments or projects that are special land use oriented. This discussion over a voluntary compliance is also occurring while there's been discussion about creation of an actual community benefits ordinance, which would be mandatory compliance for that. And so in terms of starting this discussion, city manager breaks down a survey to the commission to try to identify what this city commission is identifying as a community benefit, and there were two items that came up pretty close to the top of the list, and those were environment, sustainability, and attainable housing. Others that were listed were infrastructure, labor and economic development, public safety and wellness, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so where we're looking at right now from a city staff perspective is, is this list accurate for what you're looking at as a potential community benefit for a PUD or SLU? Is there anything missing? For example, in the poll that was sent out to the city commission, somebody had mentioned public art, which was not something that was listed before that could be determined as a community benefit. Using this knowledge then, we can start to inform more of our conversation about what the community benefit ordinance will look like. And to that extent, again, referring to the poll that Mr. Brake had sent out, there were two takeaways that I got out of the city commission poll. One, that the commission was open to engaging in outside councils, particularly a land use attorney, to help us through the nuances of this issue, especially because there is a lot of potential legal liability if it's not done right. And number two, to really start soliciting feedback from developers in the area to see how they are approaching these sorts of projects, what they may have seen in other cities. For example, included in this packet were community benefit ordinance-ish or community benefit ordinances from the city of Detroit, Troy, Ferndale, Grand Rapids, and Ypsilanti. And so really with that background in mind, just having a discussion so that city staff can, if this is the list that you're looking at as community benefit, for voluntary compliance, we can bring that back to you, flesh it out a little bit with exact items. Again, those are voluntary, and use that as the backbone for what our community benefit ordinance would look like. But steps one and two on the community, community benefit ordinance, from my perspective, would be starting to look at who would be able to help us from outside council with crafting this ordinance, and then sitting down with developers, and I know there are, I've got a whole bunch of voicemails from people who want to talk about this topic. I know the Royal Oak Chamber of Commerce is actually putting together a group that, of developers and architects that want to provide feedback to the city in a more formal environment as well. So the discussion has already started in many respects, but between the city commission itself, I'd like to hone in on that list, your responses to that list, what may be missing, and what you definitely want to see put in on the voluntary perspective. We will automatically carry that over as part of the backbone of what a community benefit ordinance would be as well. A lot of discussion on the CBO in terms of what projects would be affected, I think it's probably best just to hone in on what that community benefit is, and then move down there from there, because the community benefit ordinance is not being created in a vacuum, obviously, where we're working the master plan right now, and there are a lot of moving parts, and all of these will integrate with themselves at some point.
Does want me to kick it off? All right, we'll go with Commissioner Macy, then Commissioner Collo.
Here's, one question is, so in the example ordinances that were here, so your question about are there things that we want to add to the list, which I didn't, I didn't get the sense in the survey, I didn't know where to put that, if I did have things, but are these sort of things considered to be under the umbrella of some of those things? So, you know, like I'm looking at Ypsilanti one where it says, supporting educational and or mentoring activities that provide or enhance employment opportunities for local residents and youth, is that something that falls under public safety and wellness? Or, so I'm just wondering, are you giving us these ordinances and saying, do you want stuff like this that we can add in, or are these things to be considered as under the umbrella of what you offered to us, and you're wondering if there's other big umbrella terms we want to add?
And looking at the poll, the majority consensus was environmental sustainability and attainable housing, we're far and away the number one and number two, everything is below that in terms of what that benefit is. And so I see that as the majority of our benefits would be tailored towards there. Now, we can flesh out the other ones, and we can place the Ypsilanti example into a bucket or create another bucket for that, that's really what this exercise is for, for staff.
Okay, interesting. So I, I guess I had thought, I mean, I know we were asked to rank it, and I, I guess I hadn't, I hadn't thought that that meant that we weren't going to include all of it. Like, I thought that all of those things, I, my mind, and what we're doing this for is to create a menu of options, like, so, yes, there will be some maybe that we prize highly that we will see come through, but we want, if a developer has some really fantastic public safety and wellness things that they want to present, it doesn't, that could be enough, if they're choosing, if that's one of the things that they go for from the menu of options. So that's still where we're going with this, right?
Yes, and I think each one of these categories is very different, so with environmental sustainability, you can probably actually provide concrete examples of what would fulfill that, that's easy. Attainable housing, there's an example from Ferndale, how you want to treat that, though is a little bit more complicated, it's much more individual project driven. Infrastructure, labor and economic development, these are probably mission statements that we can create that is asking the developer to submit something that would satisfy that because it's not as tangible as, say, bioswells or rain gardens, correct? Public art is self-identifying. I think public safety and wellness would again go back to that, but really, I know in my conversations with Mr. Brake, it was trying to determine if there's anything that needs to be added to this list, and if you're adding them, whether that's a new category or whether it goes into one of the other ones, so that we can take back an actual community benefits list that we would house in the planning department, that any development that's coming in or applying for a PUD or an SLA would look at this as, these would satisfy this. So some would be micro, like do this, A, B, C, or D, and that would work, and others are more policy-based, and of developers proposing acts, and it would be up to the city commission to determine whether they believe that that had fulfilled that tenant as well.
So these, these six are something that you're, I'm trying to talk through what you just said. You're going to take those and come up with, in some cases, some very micro examples, and in some cases, leave it more open, that that will be what our menu will look like, and these are the six bases for that, and you're wondering if there's anything else?
Correct.
A seventh that were somehow?
Correct. Or if we're missing the boat entirely.
Okay, so I mean, I feel, so for me, I feel like not having seen the examples themselves, it's hard for me to conceptualize whether or not we've missed it, like, these seem like some pretty broad categories, I think they're good, but I, you know, as I'm reading through like that education example, does that fit in there? I don't know. So I guess I'd like to see some more of the granularity, which, before I say for certain. Oh, I just spilled water on Commissioner Bruce.
Just a little bit. And it's just water.
I got it.
Oh, thank you. Now I'm all discombobulated.
Excuse the screen, reference.
It's going to be dry in like 10 minutes, so.
Well, it's how hot it is in here, yeah.
So I don't know what I was saying, something with a gesture.
Did it involve water at all?
You know, I think we should, water rights need to be.
I think we should water this down a little bit.
All right, so I don't know where I was going with that, but you got it.
Well, water rights is not, I mean, in terms of stormwater and issues like that, it would be helpful to know if there are certain issues in environmental sustainability that are more important or less important, and I would say that to any of these items.
So, so maybe I'll jump in right before Commissioner Collo or Commissioner Bruce. I mean, my understanding in our last discussion, and it was totally biased on my point of view, and what I think we should do is, you know, akin to what we did when we did the downtown development plan, we didn't write into ordinance what projects we were seeking, we kind of went out there and we said, look, we are looking for Class A office space, we're looking for developments that are actually going to nurture and bring patrons to our downtown, and kind of give us your proposals, and we'll bounce that up against, you know, what our idea of success is under the downtown plan. For me, I appreciate, and I think eventually one day we'll get to the ordinances, but I, you know, feel like you have to crawl before you walk. And if we had a list of things as a matter of policy that we value in this community that we've all been very transparent about, I think Commissioner Bruce at the last meeting pulled up our zoning ordinance that said, is it section eight or point?
I think it was the actual state statute language that, which they gave us, which talks about.
Yeah, it's attachment one.
Yeah, attachment one, but it's also in our, I believe it's in our, I mean, wherever we get anything in front of us in planning, whether it's a site plan, you know, you look and you have this sort of, I don't say ambiguous, it's mimicked in there, but it's, it's not, it's kind of ambiguous, right? For me, what would be nice is if we all agreed as a matter of policy, like we did with the downtown plan, like, these are the things we value, we value environmental sustainability. This is what, you know, acceptable, good, great look like. Acceptable is I meet all the current laws and standards, okay? Not looking for any deviation, not looking to put toxic waste into the red run, okay? Medium or good is, hey, I've put some solar panels up. Great is I'm completely LEED certified, carbon neutral, and I have all these great things for mobility and encouraging pedestrian, whatever. But kind of give it to them to present to us and give them sort of a rubric of ideas that we as individuals, either at the planning, zoning, or at this board, can kind of bounce against. By making it a matter of policy, it allows us to be agile. So Commissioner Dubois says, I want art, and this is what art looks like, you know, this is what's tolerable, no art, you know, a mural, and, you know, hey, we're the next Getty on, you know, in downtown Royal Oak. So I think that, for me, I understand all the legal challenges and everything with the ordinances and all the work that we have to do, and maybe we do that as a parallel work stream, but I also think having these policy elements, not only are we going to have something to chew on with the development community, I don't want them totally having all the bias and control in this, because I think the answer is, what is the lowest cost, how do I make the most money? That should be their default position as business operators. And, you know, as we learn and go through a few of these, we're not committing to anything, we're evaluating, we're hearing some of the real-time concerns, and that informs the eventual ordinance down the road that we think will fit best for our community. So, plus, we get something now, so as we have projects coming in front of us now, they have a little bit more lens that we can look at now to say, yeah, this is a really good one, or this, and I keep going back to one of the architects that was up here, just didn't have all the information, didn't know, like, oh, you want to know what the LEED percent, like, I don't know if it's 99 or 102, like, I don't, you know, it'd be helpful if I knew that, coming into the meeting. And we often negotiate from this table, and we do that in planning all the time. So I think that, for me, you know, my thought was that we would start, you know, simpler, learn, grow, implement more robustly down the road, but that's me. Commissioner Bruce?
It was very, very, very helpful to be able to read the summaries of the various other ordinances in the different communities, because they're, they all approach this very, very, very differently. I mean, Ferndale's is only focused on housing. Troy's is only focused on sustainable development, which, which pretty much mirrors our first choice of things that we want to see in the ordinance or in the policy. But then again, when Troy talks about sustainability, they include a couple of things which I don't know that we necessarily talked about, they include stormwater, which we did, site selection, transportation, light pollution, which I don't think we ever discussed light pollution, heat islands, we never discussed that either, water resources. Heat islands, we never discussed that either, water resources and renewables. So, I think as we go forward, we're going, things like those are, are going to occur to us because we'll either see it in other ordinances or we'll see it in other types of policies and we'll want to fold them in. I think the other thing that we have to remember is that this is one area that is going to keep changing a lot. You know, building standards and building design and where people are going to want to locate and what they're going to want to see in their buildings and so on and so forth are going to keep changing. I mean, this is going to have to be a living document that once we're done with it, we just can't say, "Well, we're done with it, we don't need to deal with it anymore." We're going to need to review this on a regular basis because all of those things are just going to keep changing. So, I think this is a good start and I think this gives us an opportunity to get the process started. But it's going to be an interesting process to see what it looks like at the end than what we envision it looking like now. Because I think it'll, there are going to be some significant differences to it. So, I appreciate all the work that the staff put into pulling us this far and getting this much information into our hands, but it's going to be, it's going to be a real interesting process to put together.
Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Colo.
I'll take you in first.
So, I'm good. You waving? Okay.
So, I do think that the input from developers and from the development community will be valuable because, and I think we, we need to, to hope that they will come to us honestly and say, "Look, here are the easy, cheap things we can do and, and, and here are things that are prohibitively expensive and here's why. Don't just tell us you can't afford to do that. Tell us why you can't do that." Because then we can balance our expectations against what they have, what they bring to the table. And that will also help us develop, because the poll, the, the commission that not mentioned here is, you know, what are the concessions that we are, have the ability to give in order to get the things we want? And the mayor and I maybe see this more often at the planning commission table where maybe extra height or extra density or, or, you know, more generous setbacks or change in the parking requirements, some of those elements will be extremely desirable to a developer and they're willing to make a big concession to our policies in order to get the things that they need. So, it's, there's really, there's two sides of this conversation.
And I think we talked about that last time to say, like, we had the presentation that said, "Look, I just can't put enough solar panels on there, but if I knew that I could change something to make it LEED, if I knew that I could add a bunch of art to it," you know what I mean, "maybe that would be the right formula." And every property is unique. Like, it might be a parking ask, like, "Oh, well, if we can eliminate three parking spots because they're, honestly, they really don't need it," you know, we do that, deal with that all the time, "now I have the ability to have 300,000 extra dollars to put in, you know, something else," you know?
And, and just to continue and just to remind everybody, we are not allowed to ask for benefits that are not part of the property itself. That is, we can't say, "We'll, you know, we'll give you this good thing here if you'll, you know, build this bioswale a mile away." So, just to be clear, any benefits that we do negotiate have to be part of that property.
Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, when I got the survey and, you know, supplemental materials and the supplemental materials were great, there's a lot of information there. The survey, clearly you were going down a path towards an ordinance, right? And I remember, you know, what, what led to the original motion to do this, we, we said one month, "We really want a checklist." And that was because we've talked about this as a table. I mean, you can listen to two years of the meetings and hear all the community benefits that we've talked about. We've enumerated a lot of them here tonight. It's because this has been, you know, the original community benefits ordinance was a directive that preceded my time on the commission. I mean, that's how long ago that was, that's, that's how long that's been working on. So, that's why we had asked for a checklist. Like, we, you know, I think we got to the point where, you know, last month, we had developers, like, "I, I don't know what to do." We said, "Great, you know what? One month, City Manager's Office, please get us a checklist." And I think that's still kind of what we're looking for. You know, and you've heard that tonight, I think everyone's kind of behind, you know, maybe we can continue to move forward and continue to go down that parallel path. I think right now, we're kind of very much in need of a checklist and I, I do appreciate, you know, like Commissioner Macy's comments, we don't know what we don't know, right? I mean, there's so much research that can go to any of those topics that you gave us, you know, and there's, there's a lot that can go behind that. But I would hope by the next meeting that we have, we can at least have a framework of a checklist so that by the next month's planning commission, the developers who are asking for PUDs can at least say, "We've started to hit this." You know, I, I drove by a PUD, just, it was a small one that was approved back in 2020 and four or six units. And the developer came and we said, you know, "What's a community benefit?" They said, "Oh, we're bringing people into the town. People will come live here." That's good. Yes, that's good, but however, that's not, you know, anyone could do that. Go to, go get a variance, go, you know, go a traditional planning route. We're looking at PUDs, which is the contract between the developer and the city where we can ask for some of these, you know, unique items. This isn't, this isn't as, as defined as a planning and zoning change, but this is a contract where we could ask for the sky and they could say yes or no. And until we get them the sky, you know, I'm worried about that. So, I hope by the next meeting, we can have at least a framework of a checklist.
I, I think we can do that. Really, this discussion was to inform because as you had just said, you can ask for anything and everything and that's difficult for city staff to process, what that means as a checklist.
Purple dinosaurs. Or everyone gets a tiger to vote.
Lion.
Lion.
And I, and I think that's what, I mean, at the end of the day, what we're hoping out of stage one here, I think, and I'm not speaking for my colleagues, just for me, is like, you know, we're, we're talking the same language that before they even put the first mark on the drafting table to design a building or ask for something, their conscious, their consciousness about what we value and what things they need to be looking at in the design of that project. Because when we get to that section in our zoning ordinance backed up by state statute, you know, what do we consider a benefit? And like Brandon or Commissioner Colo said, it's not like, "Oh, we're bringing more humans." You know what I mean? Like, okay, you know, we want to know, like, "Hey, yep, we're, you know, we're cutting down this tree and I need an extra four feet for this parapet, but what that's going to do is that's going to allow me to put in this amazing HVAC system that's going to, you know, be the most efficient thing on earth and I'm actually going to be putting power into the grid and all of this stuff." And if we don't tell them, they don't know. And if, they could completely come to us, like, I mean, I would almost, in their application, have a sheet, "You'll be asked these questions." You know what I mean? "What are you doing for this, this, and this?" And if they choose not to present, it's completely voluntary. Like, that communicates something to me, like, you don't care. So, when we start looking at the benefits, we can talk to them. That's a waste of their time and money because if they're looking for us or the planning board, the zoning board to approve something, I think that the development community wants like a frame of reference to have that conversation. It doesn't mean they're going to hit all of it or that it's conditional, it's just that they, they can come to us and say, "What?" And, and they do this often, like, they say, "Well, what are you guys looking for? Okay, we're looking for this, this, and this." And that would probably set you up for success. But then they have to go through several iterations and it's, give them, give them, communicate to them in the beginning the types of things that we look for because we're already having those conversations at the table, but it's already a year too late because they've already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in drawings. And we'll learn from it. They'll come up, they'll say, "You know, that art thing, that's a slam dunk every single time." Or, you know, "That LEED thing, it's a little dynamic." And what we found is, you know, maybe we don't certify LEED, but we get these other benefits that make it more environmentally sustainable so we don't have to define LEED. We can define it differently down the road. I don't know, I'm making that up, but there's different things that could pop up. But we're letting them tell us what the benefits are. "Oh, yeah, more humans." You know, "High luxury apartment." "Okay, I mean, I don't know if that's what we're looking for. We probably should have told you we're looking for a little bit more attainable housing." Is that, is anybody, I see a lot of head nodding and I'm trying to just encapsulate the feelings. Commissioner Douglas?
Well, yeah, and Commissioner Colo wants to move quickly on this. I'm not, I'm happy to move quickly on our side of defining our values, but I don't want to start telling the planning commission, giving them a laundry list before we've heard from the development community. So, perhaps Mr. Fenton has some, it sounds like he already has some connections. Could we set up a, a work session perhaps or create a committee of three commissioners to, so that's not a quorum, to meet with, I mean, what would be the best format, do we think, to manage that discussion?
I, I don't think we're ready to have a full-blown work session where we're at right now. I think having three city commissioners, you know, if we want to set a meeting, use the Royal Oak Chamber of Commerce to be the facilitator of that meeting and find a date that works. We can set that up, that won't be at, before the next meeting, so this checklist will get pushed. I will, we will prepare something and, and perhaps I have Mr. Brake first send it out as, as an update for you to take a look at as just a brief narrative of what the city of Royal Oak considers a community benefit within these six different parameters. And some of them will be more fleshed out than others as a starting point for the conversation. I can use that to have these developer discussions on what they actually think about this list, what they think is feasible, what is economically probably not feasible. And then, you know, ultimately, this is going to be the backbone of how we craft what this ordinance is going to look like, which is much more comprehensive and applies to more projects and it's mandatory, not voluntary.
Here's my only, I don't want to say issue, but something we have to be aware of is, I think, one, we want to start with what we believe and let them challenge what we create. I think for two reasons, because every developer, every first meeting I've ever had, the first time with a developer, everything is impossible. Like, "Oh, we can't, we can't pay fair wages, we can't do it, like, the project's just going to die." And it's like, "Okay." And then they come back and after the first project, they're like, "Well, yeah, we sharpened our pencils, we can do it." And then the next time around, they want to do another project, they're like, "I know what you want and we've already gone back and have done it." So, I mean, I, I do believe in the chamber, I do believe we should have that dialogue. I just want to be careful that if they're writing the script for us, like, it might be, you know, they're going to start from a very conservative point of view versus us saying, "This is the ideal world we all need to live in." You know, "Tell us what are some of the issues with this and maybe we can think about how to achieve the same goals," but, you know?
I'm proposing putting together a checklist that memorializes this conversation and some of the other requests that have been made as a starting point to have those conversations with developers, not just bring me your idea. No, this is what our ideas are of these. Let us know how you feel about them and then ultimately bringing it back to you. And how we form that in terms of dialogue, we can talk about that. But I think the first step is on our end, we need to, to create some work product on this.
And they're not requirements. They're not requirements. So, the worst that happens is if you misfire on something, you know, no developer says, they all say, "I can't do this one element, I just can't do it." You know what I mean? Like, "I can't commit to doing this because, you know, I can't find contractors that will do this." So, okay, well, that's, you know, at least a level playing field, everyone's zero on this. And then you tweak it over time and all of these are going to be tweaked, but, you know, you just have to, I mean, you know, the ideal situation for the business community and development, which I, I appreciate and I get, is we don't want any sort of handcuffs, which we're not doing any sort of handcuffs, we're just saying, "Talk to us in this language if you want your projects approved."
Yeah, I just want to say, we keep talking about an ordinance, like, in my mind, this doesn't necessarily have to be an ordinance. I mean, I, it could be a commission resolution.
Yep.
Which I think is actually a much better way to go about it.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that would be my preference all along. I'll support you 100% on that.
That would be very clear direction for city staff to have right now. If we're not creating an ordinance, let us know.
I, I feel like from the beginning of this conversation, that's what we've been saying is we don't want a proposal to get to us for a final vote and all of a sudden, we're saying things they've never heard. We are, we want to provide clarity for existing law and how we're interpreting that law. That's, we don't need to write a new law, we just need them to know, "When you get in front of us, these are the things we're looking at based on our legal imperative to look for community benefit in these things." And that's what we want them to know. So, when they sit, when they sit down, when they put pen to paper, they're like, "All right, I want to do a thing in Royal Oak, I got to be thinking about these things."
So, where the discussion gets into an ordinance is if there's a desire to make this mandatory, not voluntary.
Right. But I think, I think we got to live with the.
Or if it's applying for, right now, it's within, items within your control, PUDs and SLUs.
That's by and large where this started, was talking about whenever someone's looking for a concession from us, where we have discretion.
We could open that up to, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Leal, but, you know, for sale of city-owned property.
Yes, yeah.
This would trigger.
Yes. I mean, yeah, I would say to Commissioner Dubbuck's point, any, I mean, even, yeah, anything zoning, planning, where they're requiring to deviate, anytime we have to leverage that community benefit clause, you know, in our criteria as this board or other boards, I think it should apply, it should be there that they can at least reference, have at their, you know, at their pleasure.
Conditional rezonings also.
Commissioner Perush.
I just look quickly back at the five examples from other communities and of those five, only two of them are actual ordinances. There's two that are policies and then Grand Rapids created what they call a voluntary equitable development agreement, which incorporates a lot of the stuff that we've been talking about. So, I agree with Commissioner Douglas, I, I don't think we need an ordinance, we can incorporate it into a policy or create, if we want to, some kind of development agreement template like Grand Rapids, but we don't need an ordinance to do this because other communities are doing it really effectively without an ordinance for one.
I think.
And it's quicker to change a policy than it is to change an ordinance whenever we want to make.
Exactly.
Changes, so.
And here's your, here's where you get the benefit. Most folks that get this, when they start the project, pen to paper, they're going to want to get their project approved and they're going to put their best foot forward early on and you're going to get the change that you want. It's not man, you know what I mean? They're going to want, they're not going to want to risk all of that just to come to us and say, "Hey, I need this, you know, PUD or I need this variation, this conditional rezoning," and risk it all because, you know, they're being, they're not thinking about what, like, it's going to get, I don't think forcing it in an ordinance is necessary. I think you're going to get, as long as the policy decision makers have the latitude to exercise judgment on what a benefit is, they're going to, if they have that list, they're going to work it. And we're all, and look, you know, we make those decisions all the time, you know, like, "Hey, they need this, but we're, they're getting this." It's just a matter of defining it and making it better. And I think the simpler the better and build on it over time. Oh, did I miss you? Commissioner Colo, I'm sorry.
I just want to go back to a comment Commissioner Douglas said, "I, I still hope to see this in a relatively vast amount of time, at least a draft of this." Once again, we had talked a month ago about, you know, having a checklist this week, you know, with the, that's the original resolution, we would see a checklist by the first meeting in July. It sounds like there's a lot of good direction that's been given, so I, we, I think we hope to see that checklist sooner than later at this point.
Either next meeting or the meeting after that.
Okay, sure.
Fair. You've got me now to, my cell phone number.
That's a Comcast joke, that's funny, yeah. So, that was just a discussion. Any other discussion on the discussion? I'll just add, you know, maybe think of some things when you bring it up about,